I'd like to call this meeting to order for today, December 18th, 2018, for the Selectmen. And at this moment, I take a acceptance of our agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. Someone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good evening, folks, and welcome. We just have two things before we get to our scheduled items. First is, any walk-ins? All right, seeing none, we're going to move down to the next one, which is a report from the town administrator.
Pass.
And Jim's passing on that. That gets us to our first scheduled item, which is supposed to happen at 6:15, time fly when you're having fun. Which is a recognition. And of course, we've asked that the Situate High School football team come this evening, cheerleaders and coaches and everybody. And we just wanted to say, recognize you. Unfortunately, our last meeting was two weeks ago, and we did not have a chance to put you on the agenda because the game had just happened that Saturday before. And of course, we're under open meeting obligations. And the school committee trumped us. They ended up having you come in last week. And what I heard was, they had some kind of recognition that they gave, which I thought was a phenomenal thing. And I was very proud to hear that. But they had actually taken what we normally give out to people. And so, but having said that, I wanted to bring you in, and I wanted the board to acknowledge you for what you had done. And I thought I'd turn it over to a few, because I know that some of them had been, made the games, and just give your own opinion, and then go from there. So I'll turn to you first.
Sure.
Morris, since you went to the game to see the governor?
No. Oh, yes, that time, I was at that game as well, yes, when the governor was there. So that was nice, when you first won that game against Swamp Scott. So, congratulations, great job. I also went to Patriot Place, and actually was sitting with a gentleman who was on the 1979 team, right, last time that they, tell you my age, there you go, last time they made it to the Super Bowl, and they lost, right? So, congratulations. He was so proud of you, and I was proud of you. And it was so exciting, and great, great job. So thank you for representing the town so well, and being such great athletes, and great student athletes. You really are a bunch of great kids, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Karen? I just want to add my congratulations to the whole team, and to the community that supported you guys, the cheerleaders who were there, the band, all of the parents. And a special congratulations to your coaching staff. He's been at it a long time, and I know, you know, his leadership helped pave the way for you guys, so congratulations.
Sean?
Just want to say how proud I am of you guys. I recognized a couple of faces over the summer, helping me with the benches. It is one long season. That's when you started probably your double sessions. And what a long season. Mara said 1979. I said, that's not right, because I was in high school when that happened.
Wasn't it?
You're right, it was that long ago. So it was a long time, and they lost. So I mean, this is probably the very first time ever.
They got slaughtered, is the word that I was told.
But anyway, I mean, you just, you guys make us proud. You really do. And I'm really serious. Keep up the good work, and follow this on to college, you know. By the way, can any of you guys go on and play football in college?
Oh, great.
Dan's going to Sawani. Just found out. Was it last night?
Congratulations.
Nice, congratulations.
So we brought, just to let you guys know who we brought, we brought the captains and the offensive line. I want to really make sure the offensive line got some recognition, because these guys, nobody really knew this, but they never missed a snap. I know maybe Aiden had one quarter in a game, but never missed a snap in a game, all five of those guys. So Cole, Aiden, Tommy, Josh, and Mr. Sam Doughty over here. So I want to make sure those guys got some recognition, and the captain's here as well. So, great, great group of kids, and well deserved. They earned it.
I just wanted to say, you know, obviously, I watched every game. I, obviously, one of them happens to be my son. But I feel bad Tony's not here, because Tony's always talked highly about, you know, football and sports in general. And he unfortunately had a family matter to tend to. But, you know, I remember watching, I think it was January, February, seeing, I know Tommy, and Dan, and some of the others, Josh, going out lifting weights during basketball. You know, I'd see him come into the games, the girls' games. You guys have dedicated yourself, over a year ago, that's a long time. And some of your others were playing other sports, but you continue to dedicate yourself, certainly commencing in June, or when you started the whole, the coaches started the whole workouts. And you go from June all the way through November into December. It was, I keep saying this to people, it's like, you guys were like lightning in a bottle. It caught, you caught it. And it just, every game seemed to get better, and better, and better. And I told your coach, and your coaches, I think the two games that stood out to me were your first game against Norwell, because it seemed like, you know, you kind of walked out there thinking, okay, we're going to win. It was a close game, and then all of a sudden, you did your business, and you took care of it. And then the game against, oh, Dennis Sharif. That game was just like, the game that really just demonstrated that you're calm, you're composure, you went out there, and you really, you knew that you were going to, you were going to win. And I say that because it was a really close game, and you never looked behind after that. And I just say to all of you, it was about a month ago, we were at a special town meeting. We have an annual town meeting in April, but the special town meeting's in the fall, usually for budget issues and things like this. I'm sitting with the rest of my board members, facing the auditorium, not the auditorium, the gymnasium when you come in. And I'm looking at the banners, and I just thought to myself, you know, it's pretty cool for all those athletes. And we had the hockey team in last night. I regret that we didn't have the lacrosse team that had won it a few years ago. But I looked up there, and I said, that's something that each and every one of you have. Nobody can take that away from you. You're state champions. You won a Super Bowl. That is a very unique thing, that very few people in your class can say, that I've won a state championship. And no matter what happens in you in life, no matter what you do, and how successful, or however you take a look at yourself, you can always come back to town, and you can look up on the wall and say, I was a part of that. And it's a team cut, you know, football's the biggest team sport that you can really have, because you really have to work in lockstep, like the offense and the defense. And I have to tell you, you know, I'm always hearing people say, well, I remember the Super Bowl in '79, or other football great teams in town. You're going to be the ones who go back and say, wow, I was a part of that. And that's something special, I think you're going to find, in the coaches. I mean, that's, that's a really unique thing, to be able to say, state championship. Because it's very far and few that people get to say that. And when you get your rings, that's great. But all that stuff can be disappearing, gone, but you always have with that championship. So I'm really proud of all of you, and I know the board was. I wish we could have brought you in sooner, because frankly, I know things are kind of moving on. We're missing other athletes who are actually playing other sports, and cheerleaders and the band. I mean, it's a collective effort, but you guys really did the yeoman's work, I mean, in the trenches. And so, on behalf of the board, I know that we have a proclamation that Karen's going to read, but I just want to say, it was a really enjoyable season. I wish more people had gone, people on TV who may not have gone, I wish they had gone, because it was fun to watch you all. And you guys were, you're a team, unique. I keep saying, you're like the mortar for all the bricks. You just set it. And you set a good example. So congratulations, well done.
Thank you.
Karen, now.
So, the town has issued, signed by the Board of Selectmen, a proclamation, which I will read for your benefit, but also all the people that are tuning in. It says, from the town of Situate, whereas the Situate High School football team brought the 2018 season to a triumphant close by winning the Division V Super Bowl championship game, final score 35-14, at Gillette Stadium on Saturday, December 1st, 2018. Whereas, the victory marked the first state title for the team. And whereas, the success enjoyed by the Situate in 2018 was the result of an exceptional team effort, where each player on the roster and each coach made a valuable contribution to the long-awaited goal of winning a state championship. And whereas, head coach Herb Devine finished his 11th season as head coach, coaching the Sailors to victory and ending a 39-year title drought, and was named Wicked Locals' South Coast Coach of the Year. And whereas, we would like to thank you for your community service, most recently in helping support American Legion Post 114 with Rees Across America. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town of Situate, congratulate the Situate High School football team on winning the 2018 Division V Super Bowl championship, and extend to the team's players, coaches, staff, cheerleaders, band members, and parents wishes for continued success. The entire community is proud of your accomplishments.
Herb, I didn't realize, 11 years. That's shorter than.
Yeah, 11 years. One year as an assistant, so technically 12.
Well, to all your seniors, all the best, you know, whether you're going on to play sports, or just going on, just go on and do the best you can. You know, this is, I'm going to look forward to seeing you back at the Thanksgiving games. And to your juniors, I'm like, keep working. It goes really quick. I think you can talk to your seniors, and like, all of a sudden, bat the eye, it's going to be like, here and gone. And your season's a prime example. It went really fast, but it was enjoyable. It was really enjoyable. I just, on behalf of the board, I just wish you all the best of luck, and keep doing it, you know, enjoying what you do, and do the right thing, so.
Thank you.
Herb, congratulations to your staff.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming in.
Trophy, just in case anybody wants to.
Oh, there it is.
You guys got a staple on the meeting.
Okay, bye, guys. Congrats.
Do you want them to go behind this luggage rack there?
Yeah.
Why don't you do that?
It doesn't count if it's on an entrance.
Karen, why don't you sit down?
Yeah, that looks, that looks nice.
Put that right over here. How's that?
So much junk up here.
Squeeze in.
Can you get in?
I'll sit down.
No, still.
Karen, you're going to squish it a little more. Oh, squishing, LC?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Happy New Year.
All right, good job.
Thank you, congratulations.
Josh, good job.
Thank you.
Herb, congratulations.
Good job. Great commitment.
Aiden, good job. Just don't let him do the hockey. Look forward to baseball. Same with you, look forward to baseball, all right?
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. Eric, what, Karen, why don't you sit down? Yeah, that looks, that looks nice.
Put that right over here. How's that?
So much junk up here.
Squeeze in.
Can you get in?
I'll sit down.
Karen, you're going to squish it a little more.
Oh, squishing, LC?
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, that was really fun. I guess now we need to move on. We're going on to a 620 donation for the Situate Library Foundation. Jenny, Ayers, how are you? Welcome.
How are you?
And usually, this is a good sign, as we can always say. This is always a good sign, donation, we like that.
Yes.
Sorry, let me just get back into my computer. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So, and.
Joe McNally.
Joe McNally.
Joe, good evening, welcome. Thank you.
Joe McNally's joined the foundation the past year and a half, two years, and he's been unbelievably helpful organizing computerized software, and trying to track everything that's going on, which, being that we are not professional fundraisers, has been very helpful. So, the two of us are here, on behalf of the foundation, to make another check, give another donation to the town. We have $50,000.
Wow.
Yes, and we are having, whoop, whoop. We had, that brings our total donations thus far to the town of $1,150.
Wow.
And we are having a good response to our annual end-of-the-year mailing. So, in addition, we are, there's a chance, I told Pam, maybe make another donation before the end of the year. And we are finally, in the process, it's been slow, you know, we lost the momentum of the excitement of the new building opening a little bit, but we are in the process of finalizing another $25,000 pledge, a new one.
Wow.
That will be payable over three years.
Wow.
Yeah, so we're excited about that. And we're looking to bring the campaign to a close on June 30th. So, everyone has six months left to get their name on the project. Obviously, we'll take, you know, any pledges, if people understand, any pledges of any amounts are payable, you know, up to three years. And we still have the Thousand Years Program, Thousand Homes Program, where people can make, you know, payments of $20 a month, $25 a month, for, you know, just to get up to the $1,000, to get their name on the beautiful donor board in the library. After the campaign closes, we'll close down that donor board at the top of the stairs with the lighthouse on it. It will be, that's kind of the capital campaign, new building donor board. And we'll go back to using the original ones for the, it's in the reading room, the book club room right now, for ongoing donations. So, this last chance for everybody, got six months left. We're working on a closing gala that we'd like to do in May or June, and get a big-name speaker, so that will hopefully be a big draw, and really close out the campaign with a bang.
That'd be nice. That'd be very nice.
We're excited about that.
Congrats, that's awesome.
Thank you. Any questions?
So when you're done with this, there'll be other openings on boards and committees.
Oh, no. Deep breath.
Well, great.
And I should say that there, Joe and I are here, but there are obviously 13 other people that are working their funds off as well. So we've been, it's been a lot of work. Last, we had a, the events we've had, you've been aware of, and it's, it's a huge group effort, and there isn't one person on the foundation that hasn't worked really hard. Appreciate that.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Do we need a motion, or?
Yeah, I think so. And I just want to, Ginny hasn't.
I got a blank screen on my, but that's.
Sorry, we weren't sure about the amount.
Motion to accept the donation and the amount of.
Karen has discussion.
One little, just one more thing to say.
Yes.
Is that, what Ginny hasn't mentioned, is that this capital campaign began six years ago, seven years ago?
Seven, at least.
Yeah, seven years, and that there's been a group of residents who have been working that entire time to reduce the cost of this project. So, that's a long time to be committed.
I was not involved seven years ago, I have to say, but there is a group on the foundation that has been doing this for seven years.
So I move that the Board of Selectmen accept a donation of $50,000 from the Situate Library Foundation.
Motion by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jananimous, four zero.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything.
Very much. Happy holidays, folks.
Thank you, you too.
All right, that's good news, too. Jeepers, I like this. Let's move on to the next one, which happens to be interviews, board and committee applicants. First one is the Shellfish Advisory Committee. And if I could. Excuse me. I guess I'm looking for, is it Nicole McColling, McCollgan?
She's traveling out of town, and she couldn't be here.
She couldn't be, okay.
She still would like to be considered.
Still like to be considered, all right.
She could not make the last meeting.
All right, that's hard to consider.
Do, um.
I hate to say that, only because we like to interview people, and not looking at you, Lorraine, it's just, we like to interview people, so we have a sense of who they are, why, and everything. And obviously.
Should we just do the Cliff Notes of her application highlights, or?
Sure.
Which I just found and outlost. Hold on.
Are you getting?
She is, let's see, Nicole is, she works for an electronic systems company in Boston, and is their executive life safety advisor, and has had various jobs in the tech industry. And she has a bachelor's in marketing and public relations. And I'm trying to see if there's anything in here. Her interests, she is chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Dreamworld Historical Community.
The Dreamworld?
Yep. Yep. That's all I can tell you.
Okay. Let me just take a quick break for a second, and just ask Lorraine, Sean and I are having problems. We can't bring up anything in our computers here, so.
I had it.
Oh, you got it?
I know, I had it, I lost it.
And I'm only asking that because I'm at a loss right now without the stuff in front of me, if you don't mind.
Did you download it?
Just having a little technical difficulties, that's all.
You're saying Christmas carols. So then, you want me to tell you who the next applicant is?
I got the next, you mean, for, the next one's going to be for Widows Walk, which we'll get to in a second, Susan DeCoast, which, just one second here. What we'll do is, if you want, you and I can share the same one.
It's a huge packet.
So it might be hard to download or upload.
Presentation, so it's probably.
I can always take Morris.
Just give him one second.
Or if she share hers, that would be really nice, you know.
I need to be alive for the next seven days.
You know.
I will share.
All right, that's good. And Karen might share hers. How's that?
Those of you that are technically announced.
Better than sharing means, sharing is caring, isn't that what they say?
Someone says it.
All right. Well, you know, we'll just share, okay? That'll make it easier, Lorraine, don't worry about it.
Yeah, it's fine.
If Karen, if Sean can look on Karen's, then that's great.
If you want to navigate, you can.
No, that's all right, I'll let you touch it. Well, you won't get sick. All right. No big deal. All right, having solved that technical difficulty, now we're back. Susan DeCoast, how are you? Come on down.
Fine, thank you, how are you?
We're good, thank you.
I have the hot seat.
So, welcome. And.
Thank you.
Why is it that you're interested in the, if you could just tell us, and obviously the audience, why is it you're interested in the golf committee?
Well, I'm an avid golfer, and I play at Widows Walk as often as I possibly can. I usually buy a season pass, so I'm very fond of it. And I would like to see, and be a part of, the evolution of Widows Walk. It's a great course, a beautiful course. It's in a outstanding location, right across the street from the marsh. And I feel that with careful, thoughtful planning, that venue could actually be a viable source of income for the town. I think there are things that need to be done to generate, or attract people to that particular venue. In my opinion, the parking lot needs to be paved. The venue itself could benefit from taking advantage of that marsh view. In my hobbies, I'm a gardener, I'm a painter, I've renovated a couple homes, so I feel that I could bring some aesthetic quality, some advice, or some ideas on what to do that might make it attractive to the town, to others coming from other towns. I have some ideas, actually. There are a lot of gardeners in Situate, and I feel that, I know when I'm gardening, each year I'm thinning the beds, so I'm getting rid of flowers. Would it be possible for some of those gardeners to make a donation to the town? And that might be an inexpensive way to add beauty to the exterior of the town. Additionally, the students at the high school have to do community service. We could put together some community service projects, and the kids could help with the plantings, with beautifying the town. So maybe use some of our local resources. I just, I would like to be a part of that. I'd like to see it taken to the next level.
Okay.
Get a nervous.
Questions? Karen?
No, thank you. Some, have you, have you been, have you been to a town board meeting, or experienced with that kind of work?
Not really. I'm on a number of boards at the school. I'm a guidance counselor at high school in Quincy, and it's a large high school. And I work with our community partners, put together different initiatives for the school itself. So I've done a lot with working with a lot of people, and putting projects together, and kind of working through the bumps in the road. So I feel like I could add that to the committee. And I'd like to get out and sort of get my hands dirty, and get involved, and initiate some of those projects as well.
Sean?
She kind of answered some questions I had, that you golf there often.
Yes.
And then you have some ideas, and then you mentioned, outside the park and lots, that's what a lot of people say, and, you know, that might be costly, and maybe a little bit down the road. What are some other ideas you might have, not to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's okay. I think it needs, it needs to be more attractive visually to the eye initially. When you're driving by, you have this great marsh view over here, but it just, it's not, other than golf, and the golf is wonderful, I feel that you could attract more people if there is something visible. I think we could just have planters with flowers, and change them out seasonally. I think that you could actually somehow draw people in by adding to, to that aesthetic value. I think that there could be more possibly advertising for different events going on at the venue. And I think you need to reach out to people to have that done, but I think there needs to be a draw.
That's about all.
Sure. Thank you for coming forward. Talk to me a little bit, I think you have some great ideas about working on a committee like this. Probably in the evenings, I think, Jim, we talked about, right, with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to double-check that, because there have been a lot of folks that have come forth that I believe are retired.
I might back up, Bob, thank you.
Yeah. So talk to me a little bit about what skillset you would bring to that committee as one of those group members, because a lot of you have the same opinions with the aesthetics, and that, that aspect of it. But obviously, there's a lot more to it as well. So talk to me a little bit about your skillset working with a large group like that, that sort of needs to take a large need and funnel it down into an action plan.
Okay. I'm not 100% sure what you're looking for, what answer you're looking for.
Just how you work with a group, and like, that role that you typically would take.
So I think being a good listener, getting everyone's view on possibly what needs to be done, and what the timeline might be, and then kind of breaking it down in pieces on how to get the work done, delegating responsibility. What I've done is a lot of interacting with the teachers and the business partners, and communicating, and setting up meetings to accomplish specific goals. Keeping, being organized, and keeping track of everything that needs to be done, and then having a long-term plan and short-term goals as well.
That's great. I, yeah, that's awesome. I didn't mean to put you like, that much pressure on you with that question. I just meant, just to kind of find out, yeah, that's awesome.
I'm very organized, so I like to have things done. I have my notes.
And you've got to be as a guidance counselor, right?
Exactly, exactly. So I really, I would love to be a part of the process, if that's possible. If not, I'll come to the meetings and participate in that way. But I feel that I could bring something, just because I've worked with a lot of people, and I love Widows Walk, as Bob could attest.
Good. It'd be nice to have some female representation as well.
Absolutely.
Perspective as a female golfer.
Absolutely. And I know a lot of people down there, and I know a lot of people in the town, too, so I feel that I could be a resource for getting people involved in some things that need to be done.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
We will be making a decision later on tonight, so.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for considering.
You can say, or you can watch that at home. Either way, it's up to you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
Eric Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Raymond, come on down.
All right, folks, hi.
Good to meet you.
So you kind of have the advantage of hearing what we're asking. That's basically why you're interested in the committee.
Yeah, I watched, I watched the meeting on YouTube last week, so I actually was here, I had to leave. I'm interested in the golf committee because of my history in golf, my passion for golf, been playing since I was five. Four handicap, five hole-in-ones, so I've been around it. I'll give you a quick background on myself. I started in the golf business back in the 90s on Martha's Vineyard, and from there, I went to Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, for five years. Back to Massachusetts in the golf business for three or four more, and then I went to golf school in San Diego.
Okay.
And got a management degree, an associate's degree. And then came back and worked at Turner Hill for seven years in Ipswich, and then Vesper Country Club in Tinsborough. And as an assistant golf professional, I got to see all different kinds of people, from public courses to private courses. In my golf management, and, and working in the pro shop, how they're run, how the golf courses are run, not only from the pro side, but from the maintenance side. Attracting and recruiting outings for big companies around Boston, my relationships with the New England PGA guys, almost every pro in the section I still know. I'm in high tech now, and I don't play as much as I used to. But I do have a unique view, and I do have a lot of contacts in the business still. I still have a lot of people that reach out to me and ask me, where can we have outings? Where's a good place to have an outing? What do they offer? And I think, you know, as far as revenue's concerned, your outings will bring a lot of money. Although, us as golfers hate to show up on a Monday and find out the golf course is closed. But the revenue that they bring, I'm not sure what, how many outings they do at Widows Walk, but.
I think it's limited because of the size of the clubhouse.
The facility, yeah. So, so there's a way around that. And that's to do, do an outing and serve box lunches, and don't worry about the after-party. You know, get everybody on their way. And that's, so, and the regular public can come out in the afternoon. Or you can do two times in the morning, outing in the afternoon.
Do you see that, at least from your experience, that obviously golf was on the rise during the 90s?
Right.
Significantly, probably late 80s into the 90s. And since then, there's kind of been really kind of like a downward, I don't want to say spiral, but certainly a decrease. The one thing that I've noticed, at least with Widows Walk, is that while maybe other courses have been decreasing in its volume, Widows Walk continues to have a poor following.
Yeah.
Despite the fact that it doesn't really have a great clubhouse. Despite the fact that it doesn't really have a great clubhouse.
It's very true. And, but, but to that note, golf is back. You know, with the younger players that are out there now, even just with Tiger's return, you're going to see more people come to the golf course.
Mm-hmm.
And my point about outings is, is you're going to bring new people to the golf course. Demo days, I'm not sure how many you guys do, but demo days are huge as well because you have a perfect range up there. Perfectly flat, tons of room and you can have 100 people up there getting fit who not necessarily play at Widows Walk, but find out that the titleist rep will be there from 10 to 1 and they all come up, they get fit. I'm not sure what, what brands they carry in the shop. I should, I should have researched that a little bit, but, you know, it creates a lot more revenue in the shop for sales as well. So if people are ordering their clubs online or ordering them through the golf shop, the golf shop's going to make that revenue because the markup is, is pretty big. So there's a lot of ways and those kind of things can fuel the curb appeal. You, you got to have money to make that building better and if it's, if we're not going to have money this year or next year, you got to build that revenue and build the money to do those things. Another part of my, like I said, now I'm in, in software sales. I'm a global sales director, so I deal everything outside the United States. And so my, my day's over by about 10 or 11 in the morning. I used to get up around 5 o'clock and I live right across the street. I live in James Land. So I work from home, so I'm free, like I said, pretty much every day after 11:00. So I, I did, I took a little time off playing golf because of a shoulder injury, so I don't play as much as I used to. I'm a member of Situate.
Situate Country Club?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I do have a lot of free time. Tons of free time, too much. But I also dabble, I own, I own a painting company as well, so, you know, if you guys get bids for the building, I can look at it and tell you, that's ridiculous or that's great. So I do, I just, I bring a really fresh face to, to Widows Walk on the committee as far as the people I know in the business. You know, I hold relationships with VPs from Strickson, Cleveland, Titleist, TaylorMade, which wouldn't really be my job, but if we needed to get demo days and certain people up there and we needed to get different outings, you know, city tournaments are a big thing. When I was at Vesper Country Club, the Lowell, Tinsborough area had something called the Cities and it would be the equivalent of having Hathaway, Situate and Widows Walk all have inter-league tournament, one big tournament to see who the best golfer in Situate is. And that brings a ton of people to the golf course, walking around following people. So stuff like that, more tournaments, more outings, more demo days is where your revenue's going to come. Therefore, getting back into the golf course, the building, the parking lot. So the building is, it's a nice orbit, it's not that bad. You should see some of the clubhouses out there. I mean, this is, I worked at Colonial, looked like a spaceship in Winfield for years and it didn't stop anybody from playing golf. Especially Situate, as Widows Walk, as you say, because it hasn't slowed down. I went by there last week and it was packed. It was 45 degrees out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has it, has it committed following?
It really does.
In this way, since the course is, is, I think, very unique.
It's in phenomenal shape.
Yeah.
As well. The greens, the fairways, every time I drive by it, walk by it, run by it, whatever it may be, it's, it's green. And, you know, it's a funny layout, I will tell you. It's a hard golf course.
Yeah.
People lose a lot of golf balls. You can't fix that just because of the way it's, 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 it's laid out. You know, if I have a tournament at Situate, I'll go play nine at Widows Walk to get ready.
Hmm.
Because, you know, Situate's wide open.
Right.
So it, golf course has a lot to offer. I would, I would just bring, you know, a fresh initiative to, to what we, I think we need to do and that's, I'm money-driven. I'm a sales guy, that's what I do.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Eric, you still in the field? I was looking in the backup, are you still in the golf industry field?
No.
You're not?
No, not anymore.
But just.
There's no money in it. I got out.
All right. So all your contacts are from back when?
They are. Yeah, I hang out with all of them still and I see them quite a bit. You know, and it's just kind of, this was my wife's idea, just to let you know. She thinks I need to get back into it because that's, that's all I ever talk about. That's where you can find me, Sunday on the couch watching golf, so it's, you know.
Karen?
No, my question you answered was about availability, so.
Yeah, I'm very available.
Okay.
All right.
You had a lot of great ideas. What would be one of the first things that you would suggest the committee attack as far as, you know, things that need to be improved?
You know, judging from everybody's, everybody else who sat up here, it would be, it would be the curb appeal and it would be the parking lot, but it would, it would, it would be more of how do we achieve paying for that? You know, I didn't go into the financials. I found some stuff online and my wife pulled up a bunch of stuff for me. And I don't, I don't think the quasi-profit you made is nearly as much as you could. So my, my first thing would be to say, how can we make the money to do these things and still have profit left at the end of the year? And there's a lot of ways to do it in the golf business, but you have to, you have to market, you have to reach out and network. I mean, my connections in, in a lot of the high-tech companies, like I said, who are looking for places to have tournaments or, or to, you know, where to play. It's just, I know everybody.
Great. Thank you. That's all I had, I was curious.
Eric, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming down.
This is exactly what we're going to ask you, so you hit it right there. Appreciate it.
Thanks for watching TV.
You got it. Good to see you. Thank you.
Is Andrew Rosna? Did I say that right?
Rosna.
Rosna, I apologize. Rosna. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and your flexibility, as I was here the last time too and had to leave.
Oh, no. Sorry.
It happens. It's not a problem.
You got to leave.
So, yeah, I, so just a little bit about me. I've lived in Situate for almost 30 years. I am, I too am a golfer. I'm a casual golfer though. I don't pretend I've ever had a hole-in-one. I think I've lost more putters than he's had holes in one, but I really like this course. I like the way it was built and the way it works, you know, in a natural setting. I think it's important to maintain that. I've played there since it was, you know, first, first built. I think the Wild is trying to reclaim the course and I think there's some, going to be some issues with trying to keep it as a golf course in the natural setting, but I think that's what gives it its charm. I think it's, it's a wonderful course. My background, my father was a general contractor, so years ago I worked with him summers when I was in college. So I can read a blueprint and I can read a plot plan, but I'm not, you know, in the trade. What I am is I'm a sales manager for a printing company. I, my early background was in journalism and publishing, so where I think I can drive value is to work with the stakeholders and as the community outreach, because as I read the charge, there's going to be a lot of reporting to you and to, to people in town. And really how we present it and how we listen, I think will be a big part of our success as a committee. So I travel for business, but it's very manageable. I control my own travel 99% of the time, so I'm available evenings as needed. And I think it's important that I give back to the town, because I was on a committee many years ago. It was like an open spaces committee or something like that, started putting in the walking trails up in the West End and I loved it. I thought it was a great, took a really advantage of the town and the, the natural setting we have and I enjoy doing it. So I want to get back into it and my wife was pushing me to get back into something too.
It seems to be a theme.
I think it's winters and, you know, get out of the house, do something, so.
What do you see at least as maybe some of the issues or the issues, what are the primary issues with the, the course at this point that you, you know?
And so I play it frequently, maybe four or five times a year. I think drainage might be an issue sometimes. I, I'm not in love with that second hole. I don't know if you've played it, that little par three that's probably, you know, 60 yards tee to green. I'm not sure you can do anything with that because you're confined to space, but I really think maintaining that natural link setting, I think, is important to the course and I think that's what gives it its charm and what makes it unique with courses on the South Shore. You know, parking lot, I pave it, great, but you don't have to. I think, you know, maybe something that has more curb appeal if you're going to sell, you know, more outings and events there. I was just at the Situate Hockey Boosters Golf Tournament about a month, two months ago and it was fine. We played nine holes, we had, you know, a buffet dinner and we were out and, you know, it didn't eat up my entire evening. So I, I think it has, has a lot of value for that too.
Andrew, you sat through the first round. You said you were here before we interviewed a lot of other candidates.
I did. I had to leave. I was out in the hallway.
Yeah. Right. I just, this is one of these committees, and I'm speaking for everyone. I wish myself that we could put everyone on. Everyone says something different and I'm watching Bob back there as the candidates are sitting here and he's nodding his head. So I know what you're saying is, you know, you're, you know, and you're giving them ideas.
And it's my perception. I mean, I've played a lot of golf.
And this is tough for us. I really wish we could put everyone on. I just, it's been a long time coming. I really don't have any questions for you, but I thank you for stepping up and, yeah. Give me any questions.
I want to be on it, to be honest with you. I'll be on that. Let me come up here. It's, it's, it's going to be tough, as I say. I'm saying it because. Sure, just somebody, how many do we have? 21? 19? 21?
It's a lot.
A lot.
That's what people draw on.
Questions? Karen?
No, you answered, you know, availability, your, your opinion. I think you just answered prioritization, kind of hit a couple of the other things that we've already asked. Glad you came back.
Yes. My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
So that does, does show your eagerness and interest level that you actually came back the second night, so I appreciate that. I know it's not easy, especially during the holiday time and working, so.
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All, all the questions in? Andrew, like I said, we'll do it tonight. We're going to make a decision, I guess.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think that concludes our, our interviews for tonight. All right? Yes. All right.
20.
We're going to take a, not now. We're going to take a break before we do this because I left my notes on the first night in the car, so I'll have to grab those afterwards. In any event, let's move on to the next item, which is a 6:45 discussion vote. The voyage change of hours for New Year's Eve. Keith O'Callaghan, is Keith here?
No, I am.
Ah, that's right.
You stuck with me.
And Rue. How are you?
Good, how are you?
We're blessed with your presence. We've been stuck with Kevin. Tell Kevin.
Keith.
Keith.
Oh, Keith, right. I keep calling him Kevin.
A lot of people do, but it's still Keith.
Every time. I said that to him the last time. I said, I'm sorry, because it reminds.
Did he answer?
I said, he reminds me of Kevin. Sometimes I get that with people. I'm like, you're this, I keep calling him. Okay. Anyway, all right. You're looking to extend the hours.
Just for New Year's Eve.
Just New Year's Eve.
Yep.
And you want to go till, hang on one second here.
1:00 AM?
Yep.
Till 1:00 AM. All right.
That way people are there. I don't expect a huge crowd, but if we do have people, they can do a champagne toast at midnight and.
We did this last year, right? Didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did.
No complaints?
You're going to have it tomorrow in the, next morning though, right? You're going to be open for the plunge, I assume?
We are going to be open for the plunge next morning, but we have an 8:00 license for the, for the morning, so we're okay with that one.
I just knew.
Just, just New Year's Eve.
I just knew.
Yes, you, you do have a place to go after the polar plunge. We'll be there.
Other questions from the board?
No. Nope.
No problems. Then I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to issue one.
Move to approve extending the Voyage restaurant hours on New Year's Eve until 1:00 AM.
Motion by Mr. Aris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Coming in.
Merry Christmas and happy new year.
You too.
Okay. Now we're moving along quickly. 6:50 discussion vote. Oh, you know what? The generator installation, we're going to postpone that because Kevin, ah, Kevin. I'm going Kevin again. Tony wanted to be here for it, so we're going to bump it to the next meeting, but Sean, you weren't here for the first time.
No.
So the next one, we're going to have to make a decision on that, okay?
All right.
Is that okay with regards to replacement schedule?
What?
Uh, no, this is new installation. Oh, okay.
I think it was just bumped till, I think they said till March.
Okay.
Jesse, do you know?
Yeah.
Oh, no, Jesse's not involved in the conversation.
No, I think.
It's only her library.
Yeah, then, well, they were going to, when we bumped it anyways, they weren't going to be able to get to it till March, so it's not going to be impacting this winter if it were to be needed. That's my understanding.
Yeah. Okay.
Josh, you didn't come for that, right?
I'm sorry.
You're not here for that. You're here for, I assume.
Budgets on today.
Budget. I was here for Jenny earlier, which I guess has a budget.
That's all right.
Thank you for the damage.
Well, you'll be one for three. Think of it that way. All right, so that one we're bumping. Now we're going to a 7 o'clock discussion. North Humorock Dune or Nourishment and Roadway Elevation Project. I got Kyle Boyd and Brad Washburn. Gentlemen, how are ya?
Good, how are you?
Good. Where do we stand on this beach nourishment? I suppose it's probably not good.
No, I don't know if I want to...
Easements go, right?
The file has a summary. Um, we can just kind of go over our efforts.
Yeah.
Kind of give you a, kind of check back on where we are and then...
Please. Excuse me.
Yeah, so we sent the, um, the easement package out October 18th. Um, and we provided, uh, you guys with the package that we sent out.
Yep.
And after we sent the package out, Brad and I worked with residents of North Situate, Keith Jansen and Richard Feely.
Okay, I'm wrong.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
First time. Yeah. And they were absolutely great. So Rich and Keith basically sent a lot of correspondence out to the residents of North Humorock after we sent the package out. Um, letting them know that we sent the package out and letting them know that Brad and I were available to answer any questions. So our, our relationship with them as well as Maura was pretty much instrumental in, in like allowing us to feel like we were actually reaching the residents. So through, through conversations we had with Keith and Richard, we decided to have two open house meetings where we would make ourselves available to residents of North Humorock to come in, answer any questions that they had. So we had one resident come in during those open houses, which was unfortunate, but I think, uh, right after the easements were received by residents, Brad was receiving a lot of phone calls, emails. I received some trickle down to my office. I'd only been here for a couple of weeks at that point, so I was still laying low. But we, we responded to a lot of residents. And we had a deadline of November 15th. When that deadline arrived, we had nine easements that we had received. So...
Out of the total of?
Thirty-four in Phase 1. So we needed thirty-four Phase 1 easements. We had received nine. So based off of where we were at, we, we had regular meetings with Keith and Richard over the phone, with Maura and Brad and I, um, where we would kind of devise strategies for how to move forward. And after we received nine, we basically came up with a plan that we were gonna reach out to all the residents that had not signed and try to figure out why they weren't signing, where they were at in the process. So we broke the list up, reached out to residents, and out of the residents we were able to reach, six of them said just flat out, "No." And I think the rest of the list, we were unable to reach. So we had, at that point, we had nine nos, I mean, nine yeses, six nos. And we had 11 green cards showing that people received the easement, but we weren't able to get in touch with them. Five easements were returned to the town hall because of faulty addresses. So based off of that, we're here tonight to kind of just, you know, look for guidance in moving forward. It's unfortunate. But that's where we're at today.
Kyle, thank you.
So I just wanted to note too, that we, when we sent out the mailings, we sent it out to the entire project area. So we mailed out easement packets to eighty-some homeowners. We received nine in Phase 1 and I think just about a half a dozen or so in Phase 2 for the rest of the fifty. I mean, certainly we needed Phase 1 to be able to justify to go to Phase 2, but we figured we'd send them all out, you know, to everyone so that they could review them and if they had any questions, you know, chat with us. But again, I think percentage-wise, we didn't get enough for Phase 1 and certainly overall, I think that the return was not that great.
Sean?
The ones that said no, Kyle, what was their reasoning? Were they just uncomfortable? Did they really know what they were signing, not know? What were your...
There was a few common themes in the nos. One being the cobble, so there's eighty percent cobble in this mixture, twenty percent sand. So that concern was like, they believe that right now, today, their backyard is a beach. So if cobble gets put there with only twenty percent sand, that cobble is not going to be beach like...
Not attractive, not like sand.
Yep. The other concern is that there's, uh, today, say there's a holiday, they, or basically the majority of the year, they can go in their backyard and just lay on the beach without any competition because it's their property. If this were put in, they think that maybe on a holiday, lots of residents would be flooding the beach and they would be in competition to use our own backyard. Another, um, concern we received is due to the, the size and the closeness to the homes. They believe that cobble would get launched into their homes during storm events. I know there's a couple more.
No, that gives me a good idea. Yeah, right. Certainly wasn't for a lack of effort on a lot of people's part. Mara, Jim, Nancy and Nancy Durfee, but... I think when I went to one meeting and I just, like you said, I think people were nervous, like a lot of people down there have had their homes and their family for generation after generation, and this might have been very scary. They probably, there was a mortgage, may not be mortgages on the house, so this is, you know, they're giving up something that they really, I feel they shouldn't have. I, we, everyone did their best to explain it to them. I really can't see people walking from the opening where that restaurant is all the way up to North Humorock by way of the beach. I don't think that would ever happen. Tried to convince them.
Karen?
I just, I don't think I heard you say this, and I want people to understand that if we don't have it all, nothing can go forward. So I just wanted to make sure that people tuning in knew that.
Yeah, Phase 1 was the smallest stretch of shoreline that we could do a meaningful nourishment project. With a nourishment project, longer is better. It lasts longer. It's more protective. So again, Phase 1 was as small as we could get, and to get a fraction of Phase 1, it's not a implementable project.
Yeah, I think, um, so I've been, this has been going on for about three years, really, with regards to getting the grant, for the engineering, for the design. There were numerous public meetings where, um, you know, the town departments engaged the residents quite often with their feedback. We've spent a lot of money on this. I know most of it was from a grant that we received. And it's too bad. I, I understand, but it's really too bad. It was an opportunity for us as a town to try to help residents down in that area protect their homes for a while, and you know, it's not an easy situation. The fact of the matter is that we needed an easement in order to go over and do the work, and if we're gonna use public tax dollars to protect their homes, you know, people do want that, that right, if you will. If they wanna walk in front of the home, to walk in front of the home. So, um, you know, I gotta thank, you know, Keith Jansen and Rich Freely, and Rich wasn't on board to begin with, and he came around and really helped as well with Keith to try to be advocates on behalf of the project, 'cause they certainly recognize that it's not only the town's infrastructure that needed protection, but it's, it's these folks' homes. So I think it behooves us as a board as we move forward. I don't know what we're gonna, what, if we're taking any action tonight with regards to the project as a whole, but, um, you know, we really need to take some consideration into prioritizing the projects that we have before us where we don't require private easements. Because, you know, we've got a lot of work to do in town, and that is one of the things that we tried to express to them over and over and over again was that, you know, there's a hundred million dollars worth of coastal work that needs to be done to protect this town, and this was a project that we've spent three years on, and they just flat out, they don't want it. They don't like the solution, and, um, you know, we, I mean, you know, Brad, maybe one of the things is we look forward, is there any other solution, but I don't know. This is the one that came recommended to us, you know, by engineers, coastal engineers. This isn't what you or I do every day. It's what coastal engineers do, so, you know, we certainly have to follow the advice of those folks at most of the time, all the time. So it's sad, but I understand, like one of the residents I spoke to, you know, she owns the home with eight other family members. And trying to get eight, you know, distant family members on the same page, you can't even get your own household on the same page half the time. Never mind eight distant family relatives on the same page with regards to property and what you wanna do. So it's not easy with beach homes, you know. I think we ran into that a little bit at the seawalls, too. But I, I'm, I'm really disappointed. I think Brad, Nancy, you know, Kyle just coming on, Nancy Holt, you know, everyone, Jim, I mean, it's been a long process. Financing, grant writing, follow-up with the residents, design, you know, John Ramsey. It's been a lot of work, and I think it's just really, really sad and unfortunate that it possibly won't go forward. And, and the reason why there was a line in the sand, you know, I just wanna say that as well, is that the project's been engineered, it's been designed, and it, it's ready to move forward to the permitting process. And we would never get permits if we didn't have access to actually go forth with the process. So that's why we drew a line in the sand, if you will, for November 15th, which got pushed back quite a few months just because of delays in communication and whatnot. So they certainly knew it was, was coming. But I wanna thank Brad and Kyle, too, for jumping in, and, um, you know, I don't know where we go from here with regards to Humorock. I think we certainly have tried, and you can't raise the road without nourishing the beach, so we can't protect our infrastructure that way. So I don't know. It's gonna be, we're gonna have to take another look at it.
Well, um, I suppose probably when we're done with the budget, maybe have a circle back and try to figure out what might be some plans. I, you know, I get it. I respect property rights. I understand people don't wanna give an easement because, you know, they're giving something away. They're gaining something in return. But clearly, the residents didn't want it. The majority of them didn't. And if you can't get Phase 1, there's no way we're gonna get to Phase 2, let alone Phase 3. And, um, it's unfortunate. There was a lot of time and effort put into it, and I, I respect everybody's opinion on it, doing it. My personal perspective and opinion on it is, it's a missed opportunity. And those residents will probably wish that they had not done that in the future at some point. And it's unfortunate because my perspect, my perspective on it is then there are other areas in town that we need to focus on. And so I do think we should have a conversation as to, okay, where do we go from here? The efforts were put, but I think we need to focus on some other areas in town where people are willing to say, "Hey, look, I'm willing to do the easement for public good," because if the town's spending public money obviously to help out with, you know, public roads, but also in essence, the first-line defense is private property, there has to be a quid pro quo there. There has to be a, a trade-off where people in the town do have a benefit, although, as Sean said, nobody's gonna be walking down a mile and a half to get to somebody's house to pitch a, um, a beach chair. Chances are it's gonna be your neighbor. But regardless of that, I think it's sad. I think it's an unfortunate time because, like I say, it was an opportunity where this town could and has been doing proactive work, which is something the town hadn't been doing in a long time. Always looking for storms and reacting to them and then trying to get FEMA funds to match. And here we're doing something proactively to look at unique situations to try to solve a situation and, you know. Anyway, it is what it is. You can't do anything about it, 'cause everybody has a legal right to say no, and they did, and we just move on. But I just wanna thank, obviously, Brad and Kyle, your predecessor, obviously, the, uh, Jim and Nancy, obviously, the members who were involved, Keith Jansen and other people, you, Maura, you worked very hard to try to make it and try to convince people the, the benefit of it. But again, at the end of the day, uh, they chose otherwise, so.
One question?
Yeah.
Yeah. The engineering for the beach and the cobble side, does that have an expiration date, I would think, as coastal conditions change? Saying we revisit this in a couple of years, will we be able to, um, you know, have that on the shelf for now?
I think you could leave it on the shelf for now. Again, the, the proposed design was intended to mimic what's there on the beach, both in terms of material and quantity, that eighty-twenty split. And once you nourish the beach, eventually the beach would do what the beach does and kind of settle everything out. The cobble will go near the cobble and you'll have that same sandy beach. So I think the design certainly has a shelf life that can kind of be put aside until such time that it's appropriate to pick it back up.
Good to know. After a couple of storms, there might be more people willing to have the conversation. They're not here. It's a problem.
I, I did forget to mention that we had a request from a resident that the easements be returned if the project...
Listen in the back. I mean, I'd be like, they're as good as going back right now, because my attitude on it is, I'm prepared to go to another side of town, whether it's North Min, uh, North Minna, and say, "Let's do the beach nourishment there," because there's only a limited amount of money to do this. And if they don't want it there, other people in town will want it there, or people will want seawalls here, or we're gonna do riprap on first, second, third cliff, maybe fourth cliff. When the money's gone, it's gone. And when people come back and say, "Well, now the storms have happened. Now come fix it," the problem's going to be, there's probably no money for it. So that's why I feel bad. It's a missed opportunity where they might've had a really great extended beach cobble to protect their property as well as protecting the infrastructure and maintaining that gap at the fourth cliff. I mean, it's too bad, but on the other hand, their loss is somebody else's gain, and it's gonna be gained somewhere else in town. Sadly, they'll come back and say, "Well, how about fixing it now?" And I think a year or two, it's gonna go on the shelf, it'll be ten years. It may be too late. Or will be too late. It will be too late.
One more question?
Yes.
What's our obligation with John Ramsey after this?
I mean, basically, both, so we received two grant contracts, one for a little over a hundred and one for slightly over $200,000. So John was our consultant throughout that whole process. Essentially, we're done. I mean, we don't owe him anything. He's done actually a lot of kind of...
Extra.
...work as well.
He was great.
He was great. I mean, the next phase, we would've had to get additional funds to do permitting for the project and final engineering. So again, that's, when and if that happens, but to date, we're settled with John.
Yeah. I'm surprised there's nobody from Humorock here. Even, and they've been notified that this was going to be... So I, I just, I think that's telling as well.
I, I just say, I say to myself, you know, we've had sewer issues, expanding the plant, putting sewer up to North Situate. We had school issues of building a new school. And here's an opportunity for them to deal with, with protecting their property over an easement, which hardly anybody, if anybody, was ever gonna be able to do. It was a no-brainer. I feel bad because I feel like we could see the value of what it was worth for the town and for themselves, and they couldn't. And, and it wasn't because of the message. I wanna make sure that's clear. Many meetings, it's just, it's just unfortunate, but, um, again, I go back to the first thing I say. It's property rights. They have every right to say yea or nay, and they said no. And I respect that. All right, so that's it for this.
Uh, did you want a motion to...
Do we need one?
I guess, again, what we were seeking, and obviously, if you wanna discuss later, just seeking a motion from you to discontinue the project for now, so we can send back the easements and you know, allow kind of efforts to be refocused.
Yeah, a motion to, to, I guess you could say...
A motion to discontinue.
And also, a motion to discontinue the North Humorock Beach Nourishment and Road Elevation Project and return the, um, the...
Sign easements?
Easements that have already been, um, sent to the town.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by...
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Currie.
Sorry. So moved.
So moved. Seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Don't leave Brad.
You're not going anywhere, Brad. You're next. For 7:15, approval of town-wide master plan contract.
John, you're just a few minutes too early. I have a couple of feet, like, I think walked in just at the end.
Hold on one second.
Well, it's just, if you wanna recap, recap for two minutes.
Did you come in for anything for the beach nourishment, ladies?
No, we're just interested in it.
All right.
I was wondering if they'd consider something for Peggy Beach like that, 'cause we'd be more than willing to, uh, take the nourishment, 'cause it is a public beach, just saying.
I can tell you, we were saying that we're gonna have probably, once we get through the budget, to maybe readdress this again, because there are other areas in town that need it. And Egypt and Sherrakers is a prime example. You know, where if it's...
Or Peggy.
Or Peggy, or Peggy.
Well, Peggy being a public beach and with having us maintained it all these years, it would be nice to be put on the top of the list.
It's just, we're wondering about with the, uh, the marsh filling up and just the flooding going into, you know, Kent Street and over Edward Foster Bridge and just how it impacts the harbor overall. It'd be nice to have some funding code towards Peggy Beach and, uh, help it out, because it is used so much as a public beach.
All right. I need your names and address.
Oh, yeah.
Brenda Hunt, Inter Harbor Road.
Sarah Kedv, Inter Harbor.
Well, that's gonna be a discussion for another topic.
Okay.
But this was just on North Humorock as to the Phase 1, which is not gonna go forward. So that's what we just discontinued. Brad, did you have something?
Yeah, just a real quick. So at the beginning of next year, I'd say late winter, early spring, the Coastal Advisory Commission is actually gonna be picking this back up, and what they'll be talking about, prioritization, and kind of where do we go next in terms of overall town-wide strategy, obviously, then coming back to the board for a further discussion and a blessing on their ideas. So I guess just look forward to, stay tuned in the early part of the year.
And also, I'd like to point out, meanwhile, there is on the town website, which I think is under Planning, the last assessment of all of the conditions of the beaches. Is that under the Planning tab?
The 2016 study? Uh, that's under Kyle's Coastal Management website.
Yeah. So you, you know, if anybody wants to see what, there was, you know, a thorough assessment of the needs of each of the beaches, and it was an attempted prioritization at the time.
Yep.
That's, you can, you can scroll through that. It's got a lot of information about the beach conditions.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right, now we're on the 7:15 discussion about the, uh, town-wide master plan. Kevin. I mean, Kevin.
Brad.
Everybody's Kevin tonight. Kevin, Brad.
So we...
Who is Kevin? How about bringing him in? There we go.
Probably watching us on TV. So we, um, if you remember, last year in the Capitol Budget, requested $100,000 to update the town-wide master plan.
Yes.
That was approved, and we issued our request for proposals and received five responses. I provided you with a list of the firms that responded. So we had a, a review team consisting of myself and two planning board members. And, you know, we thoroughly reviewed these against the criteria in the RFP. We shortlisted two of the five firms, and we interviewed Harriman and Brovitz Community Planning and Design. And again, based on those interviews and their written response, the, the review committee is recommending Harriman for, for, to do the master plan.
Who did it the last time for us?
That's a good question. It was McGregor. I'd have to look back. It was...
Right, so it's not one of these two bidders?
No, it's not one of these firms. I think what we liked in particular about Harriman, if, under the statute, there's nine required sections that you have to cover in a master plan. And they, I, I think that their approach to it, I think, was unique in that they're going to put everything through the lens of our infrastructure issues and sustainability, rather than coming in and just saying, you know, "For this section, we're gonna do this. For this section, we're gonna do this." I think they're gonna contextualize it in kind of a unique way and really focus on Situate issues, but still cover everything that's required under the statute.
Have they done other surrounding towns?
They're actually working on the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan right now, and they've worked on a number of comprehensive and master plans on the South Shore and a little further west. So, yeah, they're, they're well-known, good reputation. And also, another item that we liked is the team that they brought to the table. So they have FXM, which is a, like, renowned firm that does economics, and GEI for the resilience component. So I think their team, I think just their, their team members added strength to their proposal.
Questions from the board?
Have either you or Jim, have you had experience working with these, this company?
I, I did. I was actually in my previous job, starting to work with them on the Cohasset Master Plan, which is still ongoing now, so.
No, it's, it's great to get this started, and, uh, thank you for doing all that research.
How much did they leave on the table between them and the other one? I just don't see it. Was it close or not?
So they came in at $98,500. So if you look at the very last page, or next to last page at the bottom, it's a summary of their fees. It's 98.5.
And what was the...
The other one, what is it?
It's a comparative.
Oh, Brovitz, uh, same. I mean, like, 99.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah, they were right there.
The principal or president, Steve Cecil, that sounds familiar. Is he local?
Uh, he used, there used to be Cecil Group in Boston, and they were bought out by Harriman, so he's now a principal at Harriman.
That totally sounds familiar.
He worked on some of the visioning plans for the harbor maybe 10, 15 years ago.
Oh, good.
As Cecil Group.
The, um... Was that the, um, Charette?
Yeah, yes. Like, 2003 or '04, something like that.
Yep.
And obviously, they worked in other coastal communities, 'cause that's key, obviously, to this.
Cecil has done a lot of work with coastal communities. When I was with the City of Boston, we worked with him throughout the city. I know Emily's done work, who's, will be the project manager on this contract with Cohasset, New Bedford, and a few other coastal communities, so.
Great.
And they're gonna sub out to a couple of other special, specialists? Is that what I read?
Uh, well, on their team, um, will be GEI for the resiliency component and FXM for the economic analysis.
And they supervise that work?
Yes. Yeah, so Emily from Harriman will be the project manager overseeing all of them.
No, I just gotta comment that I think it's nice that they seem to have a lot of coastal experience with towns on the coast, and I think that's so critical for us right now, so, um, looks like a good choice.
Thank you.
How long is the process again? I know you told us.
It's open-ended. I mean, they, their original schedule said 12 months, but I think it'll be more like 12 to 15.
And that's incorporated in the contract as far as...
Yes.
She's a good year.
Tony's comment, 'cause he wasn't here, but the idea I said was interesting. It was $100,000. He came at 98.5. Which means, they're always, they're almost that, right on the mark there. But I'll tell them, don't worry. The second one came in at 99, so. All right, well then, any other questions from the audience, buddy? Seeing none, I entertain a motion if somebody wants one.
Motion to approve the contract with Harriman Associates for professional planning services up to $98,500.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms... Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Brad.
Happy holidays.
Thanks. Happy holidays.
Take care.
Okay. 7:25, discussion sewer privilege fee waiver request, 2731 Hood Road, Father Bishoy. I think that's being postponed.
It's still there, yeah.
Yeah, so we're postponing that one. If anybody's here for that, I'm sorry. Moving along to 7:40. Seymour, this is how our meetings run, you know, you get things done here. 7:40 presentation
Yeah, I'll talk to you at midnight.
FY '20, Town Operating and Capital Budget Presentation Overview. Jim Boudreaux, our town administrator, and Nancy Holt, accountant, finance director. Tonight, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12.
Are you projecting?
15, 16.
Would be helpful if I turn it off.
16 departments that we're going to be discussing. Check your pencils. Can you get that on TV? Good, Kevin. Thanks.
I'm not going to read the presentation to you. I'll go through it quickly. You probably want to get to the actual budgets. But quickly, a recap for fiscal '18, which is closed out. Free cash was over 2.4 million, almost 2.5. A million of that, the board will remember, we put back into stabilization from Storm Riley. A portion of this net is also being used for our capital. Probably the biggest thing the town did in 2018 was opening the middle school.
Was what?
Opening the middle school. And then open, getting it running.
FY '18.
Oh, FY '18.
FY '18. FY '19, which is the current fiscal year that we're in, we are on par with our projections. The emergency, the treatment plan are ongoing. We will be bidding the water project down on Oceanside very shortly. That'll be ready for the spring. We're looking forward to that. We've had discussions also about the sewer project down in Cedar Point. We'll probably have Kevin at the next meeting to go over what we're going to do on that and how we're going to move forward. We have a bond issue scheduled for next month. It's about $8 million. It's our ESCO. It's a piece of the library project. It's some foreshore protection of various capital items. And that's reflected in our FY '20 debt budget, which we'll get to. Assumptions for FY '20 on revenue, property taxes, 2.5% on the total levy. Again, that's not anybody's personal property. That's the total tax levy that the town brings in. At this point, state aid is level funded. The consensus revenue figures right now are around 2.5, 2.7% for next year between the state and the various tax organizations. So we will see a slight uptick, I think, in state aid when it comes out. The question's going to be, what do they do to us on the other side in terms of charges? So we're not expecting a whole lot of additional state aid. Our local receipts are level funded also. That's just prudent and good budgeting. New growth is up. Congratulations to Joe in the Assessors Office, Joe DeVito. He's been very aggressive in going out, looking at properties, checking properties, and also being more aggressive on the personal property tax for businesses. So our new growth is up. Financial forecast has agreed so far on the preliminary 2020 budget. So for Situate, our revenue sources, our main source of revenue is the tax levy. 81% of our revenue comes from taxes. Unfortunately for us, 96% of that comes from residential property. So we are very residential property driven. The next one is state aid, which is under 9%, under 10%, I'm sorry. So we are very dependent on our personal prop, on our personal residential property. There are the average tax bills in Situate from 2000 to 2020 estimated. You'll see a little bit of a bump here, a little bit of a bump here and here. Those are operational overrides that the town of Situate did. And then here, you see a bump, and that's really the building projects, the library, the middle school, and the police station, starting to hit the tax rate over the last three fiscal This is state aid. You can see how dependable state aid is. We are still not back to 2009 levels. But if you look, state aid's down, town did an override, state aid's down, the town did an override. The overrides almost coincide exactly. The operational overrides coincide with the downturns in state aid, which coincides with downturns in the economy. The same thing happens with our local receipts. You can see local receipts up and down, dipping, and the overrides also kind of match those. So it's very economic, economy, economic driven. We go with the regular economy. The difference really is, a lot of people say, run it like a business. The difference is when a business loses revenue, it loses customers. It has fewer people to provide for. When we lose revenue, we actually end up, a lot of times, with more people we have to provide for. As people lose jobs or tighten up, they bring their kids out of the private schools. They come back to the public schools. We have the same number of roads, the same number of everything. So it's a little more challenging because we don't have fewer people to provide for. We have the same or more that we have to provide for, and the numbers go down. But again, we're projecting level funded state aid at this point. Challenges. Finish up the building projects. We'd like to get those off the books. The public safety facility, the library, close us out, go to final borrowing, get those done. Fixed costs are always going to be challenging. I did get some good news the other day in talking to the head of Meyer. They are, right now, projecting that health insurance is going to be a fairly good number. They won't put one on. We're at 8% in our financial forecast. So I'm hoping at this point that that's going to be much lower than that. Last year, it was in around the 5% range, a little less than 5, wasn't it?
Increase.
Increase. Yeah. So I'm hoping it comes down around that. We'll know better right around the time of the MMA conference in January. Meyer usually will start telling us what they're looking at. But the head of the Meyer was telling me that he thinks the numbers are going to be pretty good this year, that health insurance overall in the Commonwealth is looking pretty good. So knock on wood. The storms always are going to be tricky for us and challenging, and just trying to keep up with infrastructure improvements as we go along. The biggest thing I'll tell the board right now is the budget is balanced as presented. It requires no additional funding outside of recurring revenues. There is no free cash. There is no stabilization fund. There is nothing. There are no gimmicks in this budget. It is a clean, level-funded budget. Very few increases in our local receipts. The four contracts are almost all done. We're waiting on one or two now to find out if they're ratified. But we expect those contracts to be wrapped up by the new year. So we'll have contracts done with Police Fire, AMP, and TOSCA. So every contract will be done, and then those expire in another year and a half. So we'll be right back at it. They are a year and a half late. So what you'll see in the budget, you'll see lines for salaries that will look like they're taking what seems to be a rather large jump. But your funding fiscal '18, fiscal '19, and fiscal '20 raises in that fiscal '20 budget line. So you get to catch up on all those past calls that weren't fully budgeted.
And you moved all that out. Wasn't that centrally budgeted in the past years? So it's all moved out into the departments, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. All right.
One of the things the board's going to see in the budget is the budget for foreshore protection, roads is usually $400,000 with 50 going to support Kyle's position, and then 350 for roads and foreshore. That has been lowered to $200,000 in the operating budget. But we've increased each one of those in the capital budget, or we will be increasing those to $300,000 apiece. So the net result should be the same. But it's just how to come out of the operating budget because of the challenges of getting the budget balanced at this point. Also, and it's a conversation the board just had, as Mara mentioned, we have about $100 million in foreshore projects that the town could do. We have $16 million in just repairs from the last three FEMA storms. The town will have to come up with $4 million to fund our portion. That is going to be difficult going forward to fit that under the levy. That will take up a really large chunk of revenue as we start having to bond those. So that $100 million out there, you know, I look at that and say, I don't think the town has the capacity to take on all those projects. We're going to have to start looking at what makes sense and where we're going to go. And again, just keeping up with the repairs is getting to be very expensive, and it's going to start constraining the town on a very real level in terms of our debt budget. Fixed costs, employee pension is up, I believe, 8%. Health insurance, we're projecting 8%. We expect both of those to come down. Our property and casualty insurance is up, I think significantly this year, although it's not listed there. A lot of it is storm damage. We also revalued our buildings. We looked at the values that they have, particularly for our schools. They were exceedingly low, so we had to adjust those values to make sure if something happens to our buildings, we would be covered. So the buildings individually were very low. The aggregate, we were good, but we still wanted to raise some of those levels. So just, if the middle school was valued at $40 million, obviously, that's not going to rebuild the middle school. But our aggregate for the town was $200 million, so we would be fine. But we still wanted our values to at least try to reflect the value of those buildings. You're not going to build a middle school for $40 million. I think one of the elementary schools was nine or 10 on the value sheet, which, you know, isn't going to get anything done at a middle, at an elementary school. So we raised some of those. Socio-Votec is another estimate. And you see debt services up significantly. Some of that is over levy debt, some of it's under levy debt. But that's a big number to go up. And that debt number is starting to really creep up under the levy, and it's going to start constraining our budgets as that takes up more and more if we're not careful. We're going to be very careful about how we issue our debt going forward when it's under the levy to maintain our service levels. Maintains level service programs and activities, represents operational maintenance costs. We continue our road and foreshore protection. I mean, one of the good things is the big water and sewer projects we'll do. Those people will get new roads out of that, which is good because the roads down there are in very bad shape. But one of the things we weren't able to do, I really was hoping to increase money in Kevin's budget, DPW for maintenance and upkeep, both in the highway and the tree and grounds. I was looking for the same thing in Kevin Kelly's budget for the buildings, for the town buildings. And right now, at this point, the budget just wouldn't support large increases in those areas. One of the large increases you'll see is actually the assessors' budget. We had, every three years, we do a revaluation. It's about $75,000. We've now built that into his budget at about 18, I think, yes? 18 annually. So we'll do it, $18,000 a year over three years, save the town significant money, and keep up with our values so we don't have to spend that $75,000. So that's something that we did factor in this year, is something that was worthwhile. Kathy is here. We are looking to do full-time the electronic check-in. She requested in next year's budget, but I believe we'll be able to do it out of this year's budget. So it wasn't included next year, but it is something we're going to do going forward, that electronic check-in at town meeting. Capital Plan General Fund, 18.5 million. That right now is 16.4 in borrowing, which I believe is almost all the senior center. So that will have to be adjusted as those numbers come in. We do meet our requirements for MS4 and ADA, which are important. There's money in there to update our ADA plan, which we didn't have sufficient funds for, and MS4, which is a stormwater requirement for government. Another big one that the board discussed is the security needs at the schools and town building. That's a big nut. But we will be funding almost all of that at the annual town meeting, and then coming back at the special, do a little more. And the final funding for the Cutaway Cemetery expansion is recommended, and we'll be getting that project underway. Enterprise funds, we've talked about the first set, ad nauseam, the water projects that are ongoing. I did give you an update on where we are on the current water project that is on schedule right now. Anybody wants to go out and take a look, some of the stuff is, is really pretty interesting. But we are on schedule right now. The big nut in that is the green sand filter at 17, which right now is projected at about $8 million. Sewer infrastructure will keep coming, waterways. We'll keep working on, one of the things on waterways that's listed up there is a comprehensive dredging permit. That'll be a permit that'll be in place for the harbor, the north and south rivers, so that if we had something that needed to be dredged, we would have a permanent hand. We could go do some dredging, clean that out. And we're starting the replacement of an ambulance, an allocation of $50,000 towards ambulance replacement. And we're over 33 articles for the annual town meeting, including several zoning articles. And I think we have three or four petition articles at this point, various petition articles, so.
That's a lot.
It's the most I've ever seen.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, again, it's balanced, no recurring revenues. It is a tight budget. They're going to be tight going forward. There are no additional positions in this budget. We did continue funding the water, Assistant Water Superintendent that we established at the special town meeting. And we did put additional hours in for the summer help and the DPW. We'd budget originally at 16, and they were working 19, so we actually kept that funding in there. That's short money, and I think we, I mean, we really got our money's where, out of those summer kids. So for short money, they do a lot of work. So that's also located in there. But there are no new positions, additional positions or additional full-time or part-time equivalents in the FY '20 budget. So that's really quick to get through. And I'll answer any questions, or we can get right to people's budgets. Going forward, everything we talked about, fixed costs, the FEMA, storm damage, and addressing our aging infrastructure. I think Kevin Kelly does a great job. His guys are doing a good job, but we have aging buildings in a lot of places, and they need a lot of work. So we'll have to keep working on all those.
Questions at this point from the board?
I don't have deep questions. Just thank you. I know it's a lot of work to put this together. So Nancy and Jim and everybody else that participates submitting all the information is a lot to go through. It's not there anymore. So not yet, not right now. But thank you. A lot of work and
Yeah, and those numbers will change. You know, when we get the state aid numbers, those numbers will change. When we get better health insurance numbers, those numbers will change. I'm assuming they're going to change for the better. It's not going to be significant that we're going to say, hey, look at all this money we have. We can, we can do all kinds of new things. But we can restore some of the places that I think need to get back, especially the maintenance and upkeep line item in some of these budgets that have been level funded for years. And as Sean knows, you all know, the cost of doing everything's going up, and the budgets aren't keeping pace. So if we can put some extra money in those, it's money well spent.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we do find a little squeak, I would put the maintenance right at the top of the list of
Yeah. It was the last place I went.
Yeah. I just, out of curiosity, Nancy, on the average tax bill, you've got 20 years of data. Did we, did you have chance to look at what that looked, tracked percentage-wise against inflation during that time?
No, I don't. But I can get it through the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to see
I have all the spreadsheets on it.
What that difference was. And the only, you were talking about the finite amount of coastal resiliency work that we really realistically cover. Do we, do we ever get any estimates with the actual, I can't see if I can, actual cost for installing the North Situate Beach Nourishment project? Because that's all shovel.
The first phase was $3 million. I think the total project was close to 10.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
I forgot those numbers. I remember.
And again, the crazy thing about those is the Homaroc project was one type of nourishment. It was more of a rocky. Mined is different. It's still a heavier sand. And then Peggety was here. Peggety would actually be a different type of sand because it's a very specific sand or gravel that you have to use. So it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty crazy when you start looking at it. You don't think about sand. While we're just talking about that, mine it, we've done about, almost about 150 feet of pore up there on that seawall that we're having the problems on. We're still getting some underwashed and some caving on the sidewalk behind it, where the stuff is just coming out the bottom of the seawall. They were pouring today. They'll be pouring tomorrow. Really, the holdup is we have to wait for the tide to go out before we can get trucks down there to do the work. But we're hoping to have that done by the end of the week, at least shore up, so that that seawall is not going to be compromised.
Okay. Well, we have any funds to repair the sinkhole, or how is that going?
We actually put a lot of stone in it yesterday. They also put some concrete in it. At the end of the day, they had some concrete left, so they put some concrete in it. What we'll look at when we're done is actually wouldn't be concrete, but more of a flowable fill to fill in. And we will, you know, we'll fill it in. You know, can't tell you how nice a job we're going to do, but we'll get it filled in and stabilized hopefully before we have any bad storms.
All right. Well, let's get started. Let's get to the gen, to the assessors, which is 141. John here? I think he is, or is he, is he presenting, or Jim?
I would like him to, but
Are they all coming in? Are they all coming in?
Go next.
Take them out for now, from now on, you know, when Jim goes back.
Get all my steps in on my exercise, walking back and forth to Nancy's office with these bucks. The budget's done.
So outside, is he here? If not, then we can get started without him.
He's still here, but if you want to start without him, there's really.
So we're looking at the numbers right now. It looks as though that the budget for 2019 was 2,008,432. The actual for FY '18 was 222,306.82. So the budget, the actual for 2018 was more than what we budgeted last year. Department request is for 226,535. And that is yours, Jim, your recommended.
I'm recommending that. The changes, you see, is in the technical services, where in fiscal 19, it's 3,100, and in fiscal 20, recommended, it's 22,000. And that is our annual revaluation that we'll do instead of doing a three-year evaluation.
So annually, they're going to be doing it now?
Yes.
About 18,000 a year, or something like that, is that, so cheaper in the long run?
Yep.
It's cheaper than doing the thing?
Does that mean you're just budgeting, or are you actually going to perform the?
They'll be performing those, keeping up with it every year instead of waiting three years and then doing a revale.
Oh.
So do they do every house, or are they going to do like a third, a third, a third?
A third, a third, a third.
Yeah, that's it. Interesting. All right. And that's their, looks like that tends to be their big, what they're looking at for their challenges, FY '20, and they're trying to do.
Yeah, the salaries are actually down from 18 because of changes, bringing people in at a lower rate, so. So I think I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Great job, Joe.
Honorable timing, Joe.
If you want to talk just about some of your goals, Joe, I mentioned the three-year evaluation that we're going to be doing annually, as opposed to the revaluation.
Good evening. I apologize.
Where's the?
Happy holidays.
So what are you looking at for your challenges, and what you're looking at?
Our greatest challenge is going to be improving our data. That's our number-one challenge. Over the course of a 10-year period, our office has to inspect all 8,000-plus homes and improved properties. At this point, we've only inspected 25% in the past four years. So in the next four years, I've got to do the other 75%, which is difficult. And this isn't just go out, and, you know, most inspections, if you can do it, you just go out, measure the new deck, or the addition on the house, or something like that. What the Department of Revenue wants us to do is do an interior and exterior measurement, well, interior inspection, exterior measurement, of every single improved property once every 10 years. So as of this revaluation, we were only at 25%. We should have been at 50. So we have some catching up to do. So that's the reason why in my budget, I proposed two new line items that I'd like to maintain perpetually. One is the $11,000 for technical expertise. That will allow me to hire a third party to assist with the annual valuations. Not that I'm going to abandon my role and have, not have my fingerprints on values going forward, but it will be a second set of eyes. I saw the value in that this year during the revaluation. I had some spirited debates with our consultant, but ultimately, he deferred to me and the Board of Assessors, because we have to defend the values. But that will allow me to spend a little less time doing that, a little more time in the field, hopefully be more productive. I mean, in theory, no more will I go out and just measure the addition. For now on, when I go out to a house, first of all, I'll announce my presence, knock on the door, and beg for an interior inspection. And if that's not possible, 99% of the time, I'll be allowed to at least measure the outside. That takes a lot more time than just going to that one specific area of attention, whether it be an addition, or a deck, or something else. There won't be any changes with new construction, and you know what's coming down the pike. There's a lot of new construction coming down the pike. But hopefully, with this, that $11,000 per year, which over five years, that's 55,000, as opposed to kind of projecting out what it would be at our next revale, which would be at least $80,000, because the theory is that consultants are going to be a little nervous what they're getting into, if they haven't been in a town, or the town hasn't been revaled in four prior years. Even though interim years are pretty much still the same as a revaluation year, you still have to file various reports and forms with the Department of Revenue, but the DOR is not in the office. They're not hovering like they do during a revale year like this year. So there's a little more freedom. You still have the same rules and regulations, but they're not there. So over the five years, this will be $55,000 that I'm proposing in this budget. So 11,000 for 2020. Don't get, I didn't mean to say 55,000, but we paid 72,000 just for this year's revale alone. So 55 probably translates into 80,000 five years from now. So it's a cost savings. We're going to have better values every year. And the whole goal, our mission, is to have fair and equitable assessments. That's our primary goal, always will be. There's no motivation to over or under-assess anybody, because we're, the tax rate is that variable. So if values go up in certain neighborhoods, down in others, we're still going to raise the same amount of tax dollars that were voted at town meeting as we would if we left all the values alone. So we're constantly trying to adjust the values based on arms-length transactions, and having that technical service will be a help. And that other, that other new line item in my technical service budget is for helping the field. I'm a little nervous. It was more of a placeholder, and if I don't need it, I know I need it for commercial properties. So I'm kind of targeting, if approved, that $7,500 will get all my commercial properties reinspected. According to my consultant, based on the research that he did, you know, being out in the field and the analysis, those up until this year hadn't been even revaled in three years or four years. This is four years out, so, and which was part of the reason for our increased growth this year. So I want to, if I'm going to use a third party to go out and do inspections, I'd rather just focus on one group of properties, if I can. Because the more hands you have in using a third-party source, you know, I could judge something as being in good condition, and someone else could say very good condition. It's not that you can't use a third-party, but this way, I've got the same individual, no matter what company it is, looking at all 150 commercial industrial properties, using that same judgment, again, just to be fair and consistent across the board. So that my number-one challenge is going to be cleaning up the data, because that's, you know, garbage in, garbage out. So we start with inspecting all the sales to make sure those 300 sales that we use every year for analyzing eight to nine thousand, eight to nine thousand properties have accurate data. So that's what we'll be doing sometime, well, very soon, actually, probably in January, February, if it's not like last winter, if it's fairly reasonable. We've already sent out the questionnaires for the first 10 months of this fiscal year. We're getting those back, and I'll start going out on inspections. So the questionnaires tell us some information about the sales. So having good information on the sales gives us a good backbone as far as analysis. And then having accurate data on all the properties, because a lot of people are improving properties without permits, unfortunately, but random inspections will keep that as equitable as possible.
Good, good. Questions at all from the board?
No.
I think it's wonderful, the application of the best practices, and the analysis we've done is really taking it to the next level. And I just wanted to point out something that is in the package, that the office completed, granted over 300 exemptions last year for vet, disabled vets, spouses, elderly, blind, and Community Preservation Fund applicants. And just processing that and helping, working with people to help them when they need it is very much appreciated.
Well, we're hoping to do a lot more. And on that note, we are actually going to have a workshop over at the Council on Aging on the 22nd, Wednesday the 22nd. I know it's a Wednesday.
January?
January 22nd. And so I'll be bringing some muffins and pastries, and do a workshop, not only on exemptions, but just the whole assessment process. But I'll be there for as long as, until I get tired and feathered.
That's great.
Answering any questions. So we are going to do a much more aggressive outreach program.
That's great.
Only observation I had would show, to get the inspections, is there any way of tying in the inspections with the Building Department when they're doing their final inspection before they give the certificate of occupancy? Because that way, you get in, you don't have to have the hassle trying to get in, and if you're able to go with them, you'll see it, because it's the finished product before they actually get their.
In a perfect world, that, you're absolutely right.
It's not like they're doing it daily. They do it every so often, so A, keep up with what's going forward, and then you work your way back with what's been done.
It's actually a great point. And that could get me into, you know, a lot of properties.
Yep.
But I also, if fairness to the homeowner, you want to announce that I'm the tax assessor, you know? So it's, he's in, you're out, Joe, you know?
They need their certificate of occupancy. Sometimes valuation goes into the Building Department somehow, sometimes might be a little underinflated, as opposed to what it's actually been built.
Yeah, I actually don't pay any attention to the permit.
So you can take a look at it and really assess it at that point, and that way, you're in, for those who decide they may not be home when you come calling. But just a thought.
No, that's a very good point. Thank you.
Well, Joe, thank you very much. That's it for.
I apologize for making you wait.
No, it's all right.
Oh, great.
It was worth it, Joe.
It was worth it?
I got 122 muffins.
122 muffins.
Well, Joe, very happy holiday, all right?
Thank you, you, too.
Thank you.
Now we're going to the library. Come on up.
Ready?
Jessie, how are you? That's 6:10.
How are you guys?
We're good. We're good.
Sure's empty. Mine's empty. Okay.
You're empty?
My 6:10's empty.
Look at mine. I share.
Just breathe that way.
Jessie, good evening. So obviously, library's up and going, the challenges are there. You're trying to figure out, you know, how to get it all completed, the building project, and then be able to move forward. So aside from the building, which we know very well of, is there anything that you're looking at as far as your goals going forward, just in this next fiscal year?
Yeah, well, we have a lot of goals. Most of them are tied to the strategic plan that we presented.
That you presented about a month ago.
So that's great. Having the strategic plan makes writing the goals and objectives very easy. So we have, the library website is a huge priority for this upcoming fiscal year. It will start in this fiscal year, but will keep going with it in FY '20. And that's, that's really going to take, you know, quite a bit of time, working with the designer, getting all of the components of our current website, and a lot of features that we don't have right now. We feel like the website is one of the areas that's really lacking in the library. So we really want to make that as user-friendly as possible. We're going to continue to work on creating a library of things. I think I talked about that a little bit at the last meeting. We're already, again, starting the process, but we really hope to kind of launch it and have patrons able to check out items by the end of this fiscal year, but certainly by the beginning of the next. And then the last goal is something we've been working on since we came into the new building, creating a safety manual for the library. I will really need to work closely with public safety on some of those components, lockdown procedures, and things of that nature. But then there are a lot of policies and procedures that we can work on and put into place. And so that's, that's also a big goal for this fiscal year.
All right, well, good. I see that, looking at the figures that you have, there've been some increases in the, looks like the personal services by comparison to FY '19. It's gone up approximately, let's see, 20, 24,000, your personal services.
So that would be step increases largely. I believe there's some money built into this for the contracts that are being negotiated with Tosca and Amps.
And then the purchase of services have gone up from FY '19, from 122, 122,000 to approximately 133. So it's about 11,000, $10,000 increase you're looking at.
Yeah, so we really worked hard with this budget to get in all of the expenses that are related to the new building. That was really hard to wrap our heads around during the last budget process, because we hadn't gone through a full year in the building. Now we know what it costs to do an elevator inspection, what it costs to do the fire pump testing, things like that. So we have solid figures. Before, it was just estimates or even guestimates. We also know what a full year of energy looks like in the building, a full year of gas looks like in the building. So we were able to kind of change those figures up based on our real needs.
So those areas have got, it looks like they've gone down, between electricity and gas, which, thank heavens, have, for our expectation.
The biggest increase is, what do you see, repair, maintenance of property and equipment, and that's a lot of their maintenance contracts that they have to use on the elevator.
Have to.
It's the stuff they have to do on the new building to maintain it.
Can you go back a little further, just, you know, maybe off the top of your head? It doesn't have to be exact. You know, to unlock the door for a dead, the old library, before any construction started. Now you've got this brand-new facility with state-of-the-art mechanical systems. Off the top of your head, are we the same, and then square foot?
For the price, for the costs?
Right. To operate, to operate on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. If you went back a few years before the project started, do you know off the top of your head, and it doesn't have to be accurate, I just wonder.
A bit, yeah. The gas is roughly the same, maybe a little bit more because of the increase in square footage. The electricity is quite a bit more. I would say double, maybe, maybe more than double. So we have, you know, in the old library, we didn't have lights in a number of places, where we have lights everywhere now. There's very little of the current building that's not utilized, with the exception of maybe some of the back of the house spaces. So I think that that can certainly account for part of it. But I know that Kevin Kelly has intentions to change the library's lighting over to mostly, we have some LEDs right now, but we did not do LEDs throughout the building, because it was cost prohibitive during the project. But I know he wants to use the.
ESCO.
AMRA, yeah, the ESCO, yeah, grant to change over the library's lighting. So I'm hoping that will help with the energy costs that we're seeing, because I do think that they're, you know, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty big.
And off, well, off the top of your head, did you, you didn't double the square feet of the library, did you?
Well, we doubled the usable square footage. So there were a lot of areas in the library that just weren't utilized, so you would have never had light zone. You probably didn't have as much heating in some of those spaces, because it was, you know, back of the house storage and.
Just curious. Thank you.
Questions? It looks like the final number is that the actual for FY '18 was for 955,082. The budget for FY '19 was for 1,36,192. What we're looking at right now, and what you're looking for, was 1,081,411. Town administrators recommending 1,074,581. It's a difference of approximately $6,000, give or take, 6,500.
Does this budget include enough salary for Sunday opening during that period?
It does.
Laura?
I just have a question. What are special agency supplies? What's that?
They're books.
It's all the materials, and I don't know why it's called special agency supplies.
I had the same question when I first looked at it.
One other question?
Sure.
The capitals, the security investments that we talked about in the executive session, are those reflected?
No, that's coming out of the project costs. So you'll leave that out of the project costs.
Any other questions?
No.
Jessie, you're all set.
Yeah, it's great.
Can I just mention one thing? I really, I'm very appreciative of this budget, thanks to Jim and Nancy. And this sets us up to be certified, and it sets us up to be able to provide the same quality of services. And I completely understand the position that the town is in. But I do want to bring up that I did ask for an additional position in this fiscal year. want to bring up that I did ask for an additional position in this fiscal year, and I'm just putting it out there to keep in mind for future fiscal years, because we've opened a new building, we have a whole new clientele that we're working with, we see a lot more activity in the library, we're having to do some types of things, a lot of meeting room, and sort of, almost like concierge service that we're providing with a lot of these spaces. We are doing some things, we just, we just started self-check and self-serve holds, so we're doing some things to try to allow the staff to work on different projects, but, you know, because of the additional services that come with a new building, and also because of the continued lack of librarians in the school system, we, we really are sort of the stopgap for that. So we did request a position for, to be shared by teens and childrens. I understand that it's not possible in this year's budget, but I'm putting it out there, because I do think it's something that would be a great benefit to the town and the library.
Absolutely.
Was it a full-time or part-time?
I requested a full-time position.
Thank you, Jessie.
All right, thank you guys. Hope you have good holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you to the library trustees for coming to support us.
All right. We're going to move on to.
Always good to see you.
That's right.
Happy holidays.
Can we move on to the town clerk, Kathy?
Hello, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays. That's going to be 161.
I made one, I left actually the money for the check-ins in her budget, I thought I had taken that out.
We have the ability to buy out of this year's budget, but we move it for next
year's budget.
I'm sorry, say that again, Jim?
I thought we had actually, I thought I had taken out the money for the check-in machines, but actually I have left it in there, because we're not quite sure at this point whether we have enough to buy them out of this year's budget or not, so.
Oh, okay.
We think they're important enough that we need to budget it. If we don't need it, it'll come out.
Okay. Kathy, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good, good. Anything you want to highlight for this past year, that you think's important, and anything you'd like to think about, and you want to say for your goals for next year?
Goals for next year, it's always staff training, you know, we've got the poll pads coming in, excuse me, so they'll be training, additional training. We use them for town meeting, we anticipate using them for early voting check-in for the presidential primary, which will be, let me back up, Secretary Commonwealth Galvin has decided to go with early voting for the presidential primary on March 3rd of 2020. I believe in my budget, I put, projected for 10 days, just like we did for the state election, but I believe it's only five days for a primary. I'm not sure, it hasn't passed, but he's pushing for at least five days. Happy face for that, early voting again, but, you know, early voting comes with a price, as we all know. It's not free. It costs the Commonwealth a lot of money, costs the town a lot of money in salaries, so it's a great service for voters, but it's not free. So, training on early voting, poll pads, rather, check-in poll pads, and also, we're hoping to go online soon, probably this fiscal year, but training will start with us and continue for online payments for purchasing certified copies of marriages, births, and deaths, and you can order those online, hopefully, in the next six, within the next six months or so. And also licensing your dog online, provided that you have, we have all your necessary documentation. So, and staff training will continue for me, excuse me, training will continue for me to be able to get my certification, enough points for certification as a Massachusetts town clerk. I've been trying to do this for the last year and a half. I'm 10 points shy, so that's an ongoing goal of mine, is to get certified as a Massachusetts town clerk. Budget components, poll pads we discussed, early voting.
Yep.
You know, it's a cost. It's in my support, it's in personnel, but then, you know, it's, it's always, it's a challenge. Early voting's a challenge. We're having it here at town hall, because of the access to our state computers and troubleshooting with voters if it happens at the check-in portion of that. Risks and challenges is ongoing with Betty Foster, if we lose her for a town archivist, which she's getting ready, she wants to retire. We have somebody who's this close, we just can't reel her in yet, but Betty is a wealth of knowledge, and she is an asset to this town, she's a hidden gem, and that's big shoes to fill, but we're still working on that. And then the other challenge I have is appointing an assistant town clerk, it's time, and Heather Nugent, who's our senior clerk right now, is perfect for the job, so we're working on that, Jim and the union and all that. It's an appointment by the town clerk, so. Departmental accomplishments, real quick, basically, the LUCA program that we did, the local updated census addresses, for the state part of the federal census that's coming out in 2020 to all residents. We did a potential of new, we did a projection, excuse me, of new residences, buildings, units, condos going in for the state, and that'll help with grants and whatnot. That, I think LUCA is, I don't know, I'm thinking it's done. I haven't heard any, any more from other town clerks that there's more to come for the LUCA program, which is a local updated census addresses for each community, so I'm hoping it's done, because that was, that was a lot, but it was okay, we got it done. And that's it, so.
Well, you had a busy year, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, busy election year.
There's going to be another one coming up.
Yes.
I'm looking at your budget, and it looks like, again, we go to the actual FY '18, was 170,311.
Right.
Eighty-five cents. And your budget for la, this current FY '19 is for 218,320. You've requested 226,992, and the town administrator recommended that exactly, so we're on the same page. Looks like just there's an increase, but not significant increase. So, that's good. Questions from the board?
One quick one. With regards to the online payments for a lot of your licenses?
Mm-hmm.
Are you, are you going like a ready, set, go sort of mode, or have you already done all the research and sort of the planning for all that, once the budget is approved in April, I mean, kicks in in July?
Actually, it's, it's basically one of my goals, to get it done before.
It is?
July, yes, because there's really no cost.
Associated with it?
Associated with it, so, that's, hopefully. I talked to her the other day, and she seems after the first of the year, we can get the ball rolling. And then maybe next year, we'll look at dog licensee programs that can be connected with the UNIPAY program.
Good.
Through the website, we'll see. We're cleaning up our unlicensed dog list right now, we're working on, we have like 1,300 dogs that are unaccounted for. I think the people have moved, or the dogs have died, and they don't tell us, so we're cleaning up that database now, with the help of Kim Stewart, had gone through a list with us, and right now, we have about, almost 1,200 licensed dogs, so I think the online payment is a, is a good initiative to get those people to license their dogs, you know, rather than just coming in the office or mailing in, so.
Great, thanks, that's all, I was just curious.
You're welcome.
Just, so the, the support services, that's the line item, where the extra?
All the election stuff.
All the election stuff.
Yeah, all election stuff is in there. Programming, ballot printing.
Okay.
Sound system.
Sorry, I'm still amazed at the number of dogs that are licensed to the town.
Really? Oh, I don't know, I think we, I don't know.
Probably a lot more.
I think there's more.
Yeah, just, just licensed.
A lot of people don't even know they have to license.
All right. Any other questions, Sean?
Nope.
Kathy, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Early voting was fantastic, tremendously well-received, Kathy and her staff did a really good job.
Thank you.
On getting the early voting, so they should be congratulating on that.
How many people? Just approximately.
It was 3,014, and it was 20% of the total overall votes. Just to be clear, a lot of people in the public have been asking us if the absentee ballots are voted on Election Day. Yes, all ballots are cast on Election Day. Early voting ballots go through the, a check-in process, and so do the absentee ballots.
But then, tell them that we hold on to them until we.
Oh, you know, what do we, run the machines and see if it's closed, should we vote them or not? No, they're all voted on Election Day, so just to be clear out there. And I, you know, it's hard having early voting here at town hall, I get it, I know it's not, it's tough, with the crowds and the noise and everything. We're going to try to set it up a little differently next time, but I have to tell you, it's the best option for our staff and to secure those ballots, because whether they're voted ballots or unvoted ballots, they have to be secured every single day, and to do it off-site, or consider doing it off-site, that, that's more money. That's DPW schleppen ballots back and forth, because you can't really leave them someplace else, so.
What was, what was the percentage?
20% of early voters, so we had overall 70.65% voting on Election Day, and we had, here it is here, 10,467 people voted, 3,014 of them early voted, which was 20%. We have almost, at the time, we had 14,800 voters. Yeah, that's gone down. I deleted a bunch of people because of non-respondence to censuses, so, but, so that's about 14,4 right now, so, and we have a population of over 18,600, so.
Well, Kathy.
So we did good on early voting. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it. Very happy holidays.
Somebody were curious, when do the nomination papers for May elections come out?
Oh, you can pick up your election, your nomination papers for the May election, anytime, beginning of February, March, give me a heads up if you are interested, and I'll have them ready for you, and they're due back, I believe, April 2nd, don't quote me on that, though, I don't have that right in front of me, but I've got them all ready to go, so, if anyone's interested.
Good, thank you.
All right, you're very welcome.
I'll be down there to pick them up.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, I'll have them ready.
Merry Christmas.
We're going to move on to the Enterprise, which we have right now, which is the Widows Walk Golf Course, 61. Bob, you've been diligently waiting for us.
It's 61, it's all the way in the back.
661 or 61? It's 61, but unfortunately, I got nothing in between, unless it's.
All the way to the back.
All the back, there we go.
Play the back.
There it is.
That's what I have for 61.
All right, just keep going, Karen.
All the way to the back.
Oh, they're not in the back, okay. Slowly turn them over here.
Hey, in the back bag.
Waterways.
Yeah, we're, thank you for putting this massive book.
That was Nancy.
Oh, Nancy, you did the whole thing? Thank you.
Michelle and I, and Michelle.
Hang on one second.
That would be why they're in your office.
So Bob, I realize this year was not as bad as it was a few years ago, which is good, and we're probably still in the midst of trying to figure out with our golf committee where, what the goals are going to be, primarily with respect to improving the golf course, but do you have any, anything that you just want to share with us as a goal, not necessarily about transforming the golf course with the capital and building, but just anything in general that you see, that you think's important for this coming year?
Well, I just think we're entering a very important period for the, you know, for Widows Walk. You know, frankly, I think 20 some-odd years ago, when we opened, I think we missed the golden opportunity by not finishing off the facility, because we were right at the early part of the growth spurt, and I think Situate was early to the game, and I think that they, they really had a golden opportunity to, to capitalize there, and, you know, of course, in the next five years after we opened, you know, a lot of other courses came, came on board, and particularly on the South Shore, which was, was really lacking in golf courses when Widows Walk opened. So, you know, I think right now, we're at a point where, contrary to some of the information you heard today, golf is not growing. I mean, it, it maybe is growing a little bit since the recession, but it's certainly not growing compared to what it was back in the real growth spurt.
Yeah, that's probably my impression, yeah.
Okay, and I just, I just read an interesting stat, that back in 2020, there was a PGA initiative, in the year 2000, there was 518 million rounds played nationwide, and they had this initiative, the 2020, they wanted by 2020, they were hoping to increase the rounds played to a billion rounds. Now, that was, at that period, the National Golf Foundation kept on saying that we could open up a new golf course in the United States every day for X amount of years before we would meet the demand, and they were wrong, frankly, but of course, you know, you never know what's going to happen, I mean, certainly, the recession hurt us, you know, around 2008 or what have you, but the bottom line is, this year, the projection for the end of 2018 for rounds played nationwide is 431 million. So they were looking to grow from 518 million to 1 billion, and instead, we've lost about 80 million rounds, so.
Steadily each year, or did it go up and down?
No, I, I mean, looking at our numbers, we went up until around 2008, and now, of course, you know, the recession, we got hurt a little bit. I do think that we should be even a little healthier than we are, I do think some of the local courses have improved their facilities and have taken, you know, certainly, our outing business has decreased. Right now, without having a facility, and not being inviting from the street, and as they say, having a functional clubhouse, we're losing our two biggest revenue sources, one being what I'm going to call a member for a day. These are the people who, who, you know, have the money, they don't choose to join a, a private club, they just might not play enough, but, you know, the limited amount of times that they may go to play golf, it might be a dozen, it might be 20 times a year, they want a nice experience and not afraid to spend money. Those are the kind of people that are going to the Pine Hills of the world, and paying 125, and having lunch, you know, what have you, spending money in the pro shop, and the whole works. The same, I mean, as, as far as outings, I mean, outings are a nice source of revenue on, you know, your weekdays. So, we really don't have a facility, and I, once again, I hate to contradict what was said, but I don't find people that want to have a boxed lunch and, and forget the after-party. The after-party is where a lot of the outings make their money.
No way.
You know, the raffles and all of that type of stuff, so, you know, I know that we've explored the thoughts of a tent. Situate's not a very easy place to have a tent, between the wind and the, the bugs, and, you know, it's just, I don't know, I know if it were me booking an outing, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be my choice, but, you know, the wind is another thing in Situate, but at any rate, I do think that, I don't think it's a massive investment, and I do think that it would be an instant, you know, we'd open up some new, new revenue streams, so I just don't think that we're in a position where we can continue to dip our toe and, and wait for our revenues to pay things, because I, you know, I, I basically kind of fear, you know, what will happen there. So, I do think it's an important thing, I'm glad that the committee's being formed, I think there'll be some good discussion, and that's just a matter of, you know, how to, how to attack it, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that process, and I was, my first job in this business, I was, I was at a startup as well, I was at a brand-new golf course, and we did, I mean, we had, I consider them to be somewhat similar as far as potential, I think that the course I was at first was, was really a top-notch golf course, but it was out in the middle of nowhere, and here, we have a very good golf course, and we have a heck of a lot better, you know, affluency and so on in this area to support this. The other venture, you know, we put the money in, I will tell you that, within 10 years, we had a, we had a top-10 course in Massachusetts, and we're in the top 100 in, in the country, so, you know, it, it, sometimes it takes money to make money, and I certainly do think we can capitalize on the area we reside in.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bob. I think the committee's going to be a very pivotal point for augmenting the usage of the golf course, multiple reasons, but the golf course itself, and I just think that, you know, we got the right people on it, that's important, and the second thing is, you know, as I said, the numbers, I think, certainly dropped, that's my understanding of, of golf in general. I think the benefit that we've had as a course is that people have seen value, and there's some loyal followers anyways, and our hope is to try to increase some of those numbers, while also, I think, certainly, different events have been lost to it because of the, you know, they can't go to the, you know, have a dinner afterwards, you know, like, Adley has the space to do it, Situate Country Club has the space to do it, and I think, frankly, Widows Walk needs that space for a, you know, where I think you'll find a, you know, where I think you'll find more tournaments will come because, one, it's cheaper, two, it's a great course. And if you get the views, which you can from that location with good food, it's a no-brainer, you know, frankly. But...
We're getting, we're getting good support from the, you know, from the local people.
Yeah.
You know, our core golfer is healthy. But as I say, in terms of revenue, that's not your, your strongest revenue source. But it's nice. I mean, it brings revenue through the whole year. You know, in some, some ways, I mean, they care for the course better, you know, because that's their course, and, you know, they're the ones that are more apt to see a divot and, you know, that somebody else has made and put it back in, or fix ballmarks or what have you. So, you know, it's, it's, it's really kind of nice to have, you know, both. But it's, it's nice to be able to get these people that are in, you know, spend a lot of money on, you know, on any given day.
Yeah.
And marry the two together in its, you know, its home run, so.
Well, on to the figures. We have your budget here, and it looks pretty much, it's really not much of a significant difference. The FY actual of eight, twenty eighteen was nine hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-four. Obviously, the budget for FY nineteen had gone up for one million forty-three, forty-three thousand six hundred and sixty. What you requested was one million seventy-five thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's exactly the same as the town administrator has recommended. Obviously, there's an increase there of approximately thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars, which looks like that's kind of coming out of your purchases of services, Bob, probably.
Most of that would be the IGM contract.
The new maintenance.
The contract.
We just renegotiated that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
We both just signed the contract.
Most of it is actually due to minimum rate, minimum wage. Actually, you know, our payroll plus, that was the main reason for IGM to increase, you know, percentage-wise, a lot more than they have in recent years.
They do a good job.
It's not necessarily that they pay minimum wage, but if that goes up, then everything has to go up.
They very well might pay minimum wage. And, you know, a lot of the positions that they have, we certainly do. And, and I think even if you aren't paying minimum wage, I think you have to, I think you have to increase people who are in that window. I'm not, I'm not positive, but that's, I thought that was what IGM had, had mentioned. So, someone's making fourteen dollars and minimum was eleven, and then the minimum went from eleven to twelve.
That's right.
I don't think that, I don't think it's, that they can keep the person at fourteen, at four, you know, stay there.
I just, I didn't know if it was law. You'd know better than me. I just thought it might be a thing to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
So they gotta pay, it's not like a service job where you pay less and then the tips add on to it.
Yeah.
Pretty much you have to pay whatever the minimum wage is for those positions. I don't see it as being accepted just because it's seasonal.
Questions? Karen?
Just a couple, just for understand, for my understanding. So the, on the restaurant lease income, so is that, is that lease annual that you do with?
I believe it's a three-year lease.
This is year three.
After this year.
Three, one and one?
It was two.
One was two one-year extensions, I think it was.
Yeah.
Or two with one-year extension. It was short because we thought we'd be making improvements at the course.
That's right.
I know it is up after this year.
I think it was, I think it was a two with, with one.
We're in a one-year extension right now.
So that, that was actually my second part of that question is, so if somebody, under the lease, if somebody rents out the facility to use for an event, is that, is that income to the town, or is that to?
No.
It goes to the leaseholder. So, okay. Then that makes perfect sense that when we have a nice new shiny, we have a new lease as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I just, I didn't understand, under your, your breakout expenses, there's capital outlay and capital articles in the breakout in your five-year Enterprise Fund summary?
Capital outlay would be something near twenty-five thousand dollars. It doesn't qualify as capital charter.
Okay.
And then the capital charter, something like that, capital units, like the last one with thirty thousand dollars for the design, and ten years and forty thousand dollars.
And then the debt's below the line. Okay. I should get this. No, I'm not. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
So Bob, are you having like a firehouse sale on the products right before Christmas to unload all the items you have in the shop before it closes officially, or not?
Well, we've got something going on, but I mean, we really, we, our inventory's pretty much in, in pretty good shape.
I was gonna say, it's probably low, yeah, yeah, okay.
No fires out there.
Officially closed yet? Is it a date? Are you keeping it for the weather?
No, till Sunday. Sunday will be official close, and then the dogs will take over on, like, Christmas Day, you know, so. Sometimes I think we get more action during that period than we do during the golf season. But, yeah, it's been, truthfully, this year, other than the drought year, which was specific to us.
Yeah.
You know, DEP kind of killed us that year, frankly. But other than that year, the twenty-two years of operation at Widows Walk, we have lost more rounds to weather this year than any other year.
Seriously?
Really?
By far.
No kidding?
Yeah, we lost...
It surprises me, because I felt like every time I drove by, the parking lot was full.
Yeah, well, I mean, there are times. What I'm saying is that...
A lot of rainy weekends.
Yeah, both spring and fall.
That's true. Yeah.
Spring was a fairly cold, rainy period, and primarily on weekends, as, you can tell he must go to the beach or something. He knows about the weekends. And then the, the fall was the same. You know, we, we lost, it was basically every single weekend, we lost at least one day. And then, you know, unusual for Situate to lose to heat.
Yeah.
This year here, I mean, we had, you know, we had oppressive weather even as close to the ocean as we were. So, it impacted us, and, you know, and in this case, we're not alone. I mean, it was really all of New England. In fact, I think we missed a lot of the heavy rains that a lot of the places got. You know, I would see days when we didn't get anything, and they'd be showing streets flooded in Worcester or something. So, and obviously, we don't get quite as much humidity as, you know, when you go a little bit inland.
Right, right.
But it certainly, it impacted our rounds without a doubt. And it's pretty much, frankly, it's pretty much nationwide.
Well, let's get out of this year.
Yeah.
This calendar year.
Yeah, it wasn't...
We'll improve the budget next, when we get into the next calendar year.
Yeah.
Well, Bob, thank you.
Sounds good.
Very much.
Have a great holiday season.
You too.
Too. Maybe some peddlers should...
Gonna move over to, I'm sorry, what's that?
So maybe somebody with a, with a food truck wants to open a coffee stand near Widows Walk once the dog walkers come in.
I'm gonna be right back. Can we continue? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, we're gonna move on to Board of Health, five-ten. There we go.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let's just get to it here.
How you holding up?
So it's your first time presenting?
Yes, it is.
He actually kind of wants you to go through everything. This is what happens, and when Kyle gets in, he's gonna do the same. It's what happened to Don when he did it, right? We had to go through each stage.
Snacks and fresh produce.
Well, we didn't say we were supposed to stop, Don. You're supposed to continue. Good evening, how are you?
Hi.
So, what are some of the goals that you're looking at, just to try to see for, just this year, that you, you'd like to think? And, you know, don't have to be audacious, just, you know, what are your thoughts?
Well, a director would be good.
Yeah.
And a new food inspector would be good. So that's two goals that we really need to work at. Because the current food inspector is retiring at the end of the year, so that job's been posted. So, and with the new, the state just adopted the federal two thousand thirteen food code, so the Board of Health here will have to adopt that. And so there will be a lot of changes going with that. So a lot of the food establishments will be going through a lot of changes as well with those, with those new food codes. So hopefully...
So if we get a new inspector, not if, when we get a new inspector, would the Board of Health think about putting maybe like a little seminar together for all the restaurants? You know, to say, hey, listen, you gotta cover this, because this is what's coming down the pike, and you need to, to think about it. I think it'd be great, kind of overture, if you had the time, to do it.
It's an option.
And tell them that they better, because if not, they're gonna get inspected for it. They don't want to be in the position of saying, well, I didn't know that.
Correct. And, and a lot of towns have already adopted the two thousand thirteen food code, and they've been doing it for the last couple of years. So it would be good if we could find an inspector that already has been doing them elsewhere.
Experienced, yeah.
That would be really great to be able to have that, because they'll be able to be a good teaching tool for the food establishments here in town. So...
Is that the contractual line, the estimated contractual line?
Food inspectors and they have salaries.
Okay.
Well, let's look at your budget. So, the budget for FY eighteen was a hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and seventy-nine. That was actual. The budget, did I say FY nineteen or eighteen?
I said nineteen.
I said what?
Nineteen.
I did say nineteen. I thought so, too. And I think I said, I said, there's fire in a bottle, which I meant actually, right wing of the bottle. But, that was earlier on for people who are here at six. All right, so that was FY eighteen. FY nineteen, the budget was for two hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. So that was a hundred thousand dollars more. This year's request is for two hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and fifty, fifty-four dollars. Town administrators recommended two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is just a difference of about twenty-five hundred dollars. And Nancy, maybe you can remind me, why did it go up so much between eighteen and nineteen of about a hundred thousand?
We had an assistant.
Put a good position.
New position?
Assistant director.
Gotcha.
Yep.
There we go.
Your position.
Yeah, you got Joan.
There you go.
Yeah.
And now you get to do this. How's that? That's nice. Seems pretty level-funded, for the most part. Questions for the board?
I just have a question for Jim. Where are we with the search?
We did a search. We really didn't find a whole lot of good candidates. So we're, as part of our contract negotiations, we looked to upgrade that position. They were ratifying yesterday or today. As soon as I get it back, it's ratified, we'll go back out at the, at the new salary.
The new salary, okay. Thank you.
And the inspector's...
No other questions?
No, just thank you, Joe, for holding down the fort.
Has the inspector position been posted?
Uh, I believe it has, yeah.
Posted, yes.
Yeah.
Well, guess what? That's it.
That's it, okay, great.
We want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, all right?
Happy holidays to you, too. Thank you.
Five forty-three, Veterans Services.
Council on Aging.
Oh, Council on Aging. Oh, I missed it back.
Linda. Linda's been here just as long.
Linda, all right, sorry. I skipped over you.
I was running from the fire in the lawn.
Don't call me Kevin.
I will not call you Kevin. Not yet.
I think you should.
Well, Linda, we know what the goal is.
Okay.
Pretty much what the goal is this year, and we're still working on that. And I understand at some point, we're due to hear from Joel and from the...
In rate.
Have they voted yet on the, the Building Committee?
The Public Building Committee did approve the design. They approved the design.
Right, so that's gonna come to us at some point.
So it's coming to you on the eighth.
All right, so that's your priority and your goal, right?
It is.
All right, well, so we know that.
Okay.
So that's coming January eighth, and we'll see you then on that one.
Four months.
And in conclusion.
Right. I mean, that's all, that's really important at this point. But, obviously, we're still continuing to help older adults stay healthy, active and engaged and enriched, know about their benefits and resources, get to where they need to go and continue to contribute. That's, that's our real goal, of course, but...
Yep. Well, I think, pretty much, looking at your budget, it's, it's a decrease, what you're looking at. But I think the difference is, what, just a...
Well, operationally...
Your transition coordinator over to the GACTRA fund?
Gotcha.
But that still needs to be confirmed with GACTRA that they can afford the full salary of it.
They can, yeah.
Oh, so that's what that is? Okay.
I'd say it's a decrease because the actual for FY eighteen was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven. The budget for this current fiscal year is two hundred and twenty-three thousand sixty dollars. What you're requesting, what was actually agreed upon by the town administrators, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. So that's a, that's a difference of thirty-three thousand, thereabouts.
There was some transition in salaries and some moving.
Okay.
We support a full-time position through the formula grant and not in the budget, so...
Which is pretty straightforward.
Operationally, it's level, fairly level-funded, and that's been consistent, twenty thousand on top of the personnel.
Yeah.
Which we can manage to continue, you know, utilities have risen, but we juggle, and we do get some support and donations, and then have the formula grant. So, we manage.
Good. Just for a little longer, hopefully.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. You know, aside from the formula grant, where else do you seek for opportunities for donations to the senior center as far as, you know, other granting opportunities? Are there any federal?
I have not pursued whether there are really federal grants. I mean, other than through my own Mass Council on Aging, in the National Council on Aging, and sometimes there are.
Okay.
There is some money through the state, and they are advocating for us to have more. But, but generally speaking, that is specific to a program or some initiative that we can take advantage of, which is great. And that is primarily how we offer most of our new programs. The other grants I've been able to pursue really are smaller and also really program-related. But there could be other opportunities, and I'm not sure. I think, especially as we initiate with the age-friendly and start to pursue some other opportunities community-wide, things could open up. So we are looking at that.
Okay.
Karen?
I just, the age-friendly initiative, what are, what's the next thing coming down the road on that?
So we have, I guess, initially developed a steering committee that has met, though not in total. So hopefully, that will happen in January. And, and it could be fluid a little bit, just trying to educate and get people on board and understanding what the possibilities are with that. And then it is to, to really talk about and brainstorm on what the community does well, thinking about an action plan, sort of target a couple of areas that would be useful. And we would love to pursue, find a grant, and I have good help on that, Caitlin Coyle, who is part of the UMass Gerontology Institute, and she does this, and also Mark Fenton. Just nice to have some experience there. But we'd like to begin with something visible that we could maybe fund through a grant, so the community sees that this is something, a new initiative, that we're pursuing community-wide across the lifespan, but coming out of the Council on Aging, which should be good.
It's a, it's a great initiative, so...
So I think we'll meet monthly, as long as the winter cooperates, and, you know, maybe not as often afterwards, but that's the goal right now.
Great.
Great. Any other questions?
We're doing a good job. No, just thank you for everything you do with what you have, so it's great.
I could talk about that, but...
Well, we're gonna talk about that shortly, next, next meeting. Big discussion on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, let's skip over the health, the veterans, and let's go to, no. Don, how are you?
All right.
Five forty-three, please. Don, on behalf of the board, I just want to condol, express our condolences for your loss and our sympathies. And again, we appreciate what you do, and under the circumstances, again, we're sorry. Thank you. But, to our goals and things, Jim, now I'm calling you Jim, Don. Calling everybody, everybody.
Everyone, just Kevin.
I know that, obviously, the Codworth Cemetery is a big one, so I didn't know what your thoughts were. You'd like to just quickly share?
So, so that's ongoing right now with, we have a, a donation, a donor that's helping us out on one of the other projects. And I've been working with him closely, trying to design on top of what we're already doing with the expansion, with the vault, another pre-main's garden. This, the family has stepped up and, and offered graciously to give us a donation on that. So I've been working with him lately, over the last, oh, boy, four or five months. I came in today, I mean, there's, there was probably seven calls from him, but just trying to get the design down and make sure it's, it's what we are looking for. But, and then, again, with the, the other part of the project, the capital plan part of the project, looks like everything is on course, and we're looking at June, hopefully, to put the shovel in.
Good.
Again, that's just a tentative. We, you know, gotta shore things up, but it looks that way.
Be nice if it were, I'm timing with Memorial Day, but I know that's a big ask. But I'm like, if it were, that would be nice. Nice way of transitioning in the Memorial Day for it, but just a thought.
A big thing there, again, is the area and, and the weather.
Yeah.
You know, that's, so. But, everything looks like it's on track, though.
That's great. Well, getting to your budget, hang on one second here. Excuse me. It is, your actual for FY eighteen was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand seventy-three dollars. Your budget for this current year is two hundred and four thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars. It looks as though that you're requesting two hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars, which was an increase of about forty-five hundred dollars, thereabouts. Town administrators basically keeping it pretty much the same as it was in FY nineteen. So there's just a slight change of about four thousand dollars. forty-five hundred dollars, thereabouts. Town administrators basically keeping it pretty much the same as it was in FY nineteen. So there's just a slight change of about four thousand dollars. Seems pretty, pretty much level funded.
Yes, yep.
Questions from the board on that?
Do you have enough resources to service the veterans that are coming forth? Are you seeing any sort of an uptick in, any type of frequency?
I would say, coming up, let's see, February eighth will be seven years.
Okay.
I would say the last two, especially this year, has been, I've, I've never seen an increase like this that fast.
Really?
Yeah.
Where's that, uh, service sort of level? Is it a particular age group, or what is it?
It's, it's across the board.
It is?
It is. I'm actually, I've never seen this before, and I don't even know where these calls are coming from, but, um, the federal claims, I, I'm allowed to do federal claims.
Okay.
I think the word's out there, I don't know why, but I've gotten calls to help veterans out from other towns, other states. Um, and I've been doing those, and I've been trying to put them in, because I don't want to leave them out there, they're not getting the service they need.
Right.
So I want to do them for them, but I'm finding that then all of a sudden, my responsibilities here get stretched.
So is that the additional dollars that you had asked for in the part-time salaries to help with that?
Uh, yeah, that was just, um, yeah, that's just to maintain what we've been doing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. But, yeah, I don't want to turn anyone away, and I won't.
No.
But, I just, I just have to, um, it, it's an, you know, it goes up and down. I, I can, right now, it just seems a little more stressed right now, and it's kind of odd, because the holidays, it's usually slower, but...
Hmm.
It's, I'm finding that's the trend now. It's not, there's not going to be a break in there.
Yeah.
So I just have to adjust to that, and I might have to make sure that some of these outside ones use their own towns.
Right. Yeah.
If I have to, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Wish you a Merry Christmas, appreciate it.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
All right, now, we have the Commission on Disabilities, which is five forty-nine. Nancy, are you here for the remaining ones?
I'm here for the Commission on Disabilities.
Uh-huh.
They asked if I could represent them, and I'm glad to do so.
Good.
So their budget is level funded at five thousand dollars, which it normally is. They had their awareness event on November third, and that, a copy of that flyer is in your packet, and they wanted to show you some of the great work they've been doing in the last couple of years. They did move around their budget request a little bit this year to put a little bit more of the five thousand in support services that would give them the flexibility if, to either purchase something that would be useful for residents who have mobility or other access issues. So as you're aware, that they did bought, purchased another beach chair last year, beach wheelchair, and that was very useful, so they would like to do another something of, of that type of item for this year. And they're still very interested to take ideas from anyone, so if you have any ideas, please feel free to forward them along to the commission, and we'll pass them along to you. And they hope to make another purchase before the end of the fiscal year, but this will give them the flexibility for the current, for the fiscal twenty fiscal year.
Great. Jim, this is really towards you, the RFP on the assessment, is that...
Yes. We did it, we didn't have enough money.
Yeah.
So we rejected it, and we're seeking additional funding in the capital budget to put it out back there again.
So we didn't allocate enough money for the actual evaluation that we needed to have done?
Way more than we thought it would be.
Really?
Four times more.
Yeah.
Wow.
Oh, my.
I mean, here we are, just thinking, well, sorry, it means to interrupt you, but I'm gonna keep going anyway.
Please do.
You can't talk, okay? Well, it was interesting, because we were just discussing, sort of, right, with the, with the award for the generator. You know, when we seem to put a number out there, it always comes in close to that, so, you know, thinking about that strategy, so I'm curious, that it's four times more expensive than we thought?
Four times more expensive, and one of the most expensive, so we had two bidders, one, you know, we evaluated the two proposals, we ranked, the Commission on Disabilities ranked them. We opened the one that was the higher ranking, fell over when we saw the price, which we appropriated fifty thousand, the price was over two hundred thousand.
Wow.
So we opened the second one, because the rankings, this person could also, this firm could also do the job, and theirs was eighty-three thousand. And then they had a little caveat that said, "We didn't know how many miles you had, and we charged six hundred dollars per mile of sidewalk for inspections and recommendations." So if you can just kind of guesstimate how many miles of sidewalks there are in town, then they kind of really came much closer together. So, you know, Bob Vogel was concerned that maybe our RFP was too inclusive, but the question is, what do you want to leave off when you're actually going to do this for the first time since 1995?
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of catching up to do.
And we can, when we recraft it and send it back out, depending on what we have for funding for it, we can always put it in an add alternate, so we know the sidewalks will be very expensive, do that as an add alternate. But, I mean, it's a critical piece of the plan to know what it is exactly that we would need to do.
Mm-hmm.
To bring everything up to where it needs to be.
But it makes sense, because, I mean, fifty thousand dollars to go through an inventory of the town with respect to what it needs to improve for accessibility.
It was a sixty-four-page RFP.
It's a pretty large, that's a pretty large, you know, expense.
It's big.
It is, so...
It was fun. Lots of fun to put together.
And as you say, it hasn't been done since ninety-three, and I actually think it's a great thing, town to have it, to begin to kind of work towards it, and the master plan, all the building, anything that we're doing, to focus on that, because if you trip way out of it, trip way at it, I think you're gonna find the town, you know, I, it, how do I put this? My, I, I realized after having knee surgery in the summer, just how difficult it was to ambulate around, and finding it not accessible, and I'm like, changed my perspective, so...
We had those conversations with the mayor, West Cork, too.
Yeah.
When we were planning for their visit, we're looking at venues going, "Wait a second, hold on, can't be there, can't be there," so it...
It really is an eye-opener, when people realize, you don't realize it until...
You need it.
You have a family member, or you need it for yourself, how, how inaccessible sometimes, how inaccessible our town is, and how we need to focus on trying to improve it.
And Jim has applied for a Mass Commission on Disabilities grant to help offset the cost of the study as well.
Oh, good.
Good.
That's a grant.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask that, if there was a state grant.
Up to fifty thousand dollars.
All right, well, that one's five thousand, so that takes care of the Commission on Disabilities. Now, review of non-mandatory articles. I guess that's primarily, it's, we're looking at Jim for one twenty-three, is that it for the selectmen?
Yep.
All right, let's get to one, two, three. This is where we actually loan a lot of money up, right, to pay for the selectmen? Is that the dirty secret?
I zeroed out that line, I think, this time.
All right, let's get to it.
Actually, the budget is, is down significantly from the department request. For the most part, it is level funded. A couple of small requests, the staff had looked for in-office supplies and stuff, we took out, but we were looking for a lot of money in contract bargaining, but because we believe we'll have most of those contracts settled, we took that back out, and that was redistributed back into lines.
So, the actual for FY eighteen was 757,164. The budget for the current year is for 750, 757,487. You were mentioning the department request was for 972,561, but that's what you're talking about backing up.
Yeah.
So now, we're looking at 785,376.
Yep.
Okay. Questions for the board?
Just a small question, is there additional training occurring, or is training just costing more?
Uh, we, the training budget, I believe, is training for the entire town, so it's getting more expensive, and we're trying to do more.
Okay.
So there's also some for, specifically, we put a little bit more in there for Kyle, because we know he's gonna have to go to some stuff.
You say it's training for the whole town, but not for...
Not for enterprise.
But not for police, fire, all that?
No, a lot of that training comes out of there, too.
Yeah, that's, okay.
I'm gonna shut right now.
Yep.
Okay.
Comes out of there.
All right.
Well, I'm excited about Goal Three, just to bend a Cold Parkway project for CPC approval.
That was all Lorraine, she put that project together.
Thank you.
Move back, Stan.
Well, I'll be coming back with the board, probably in the spring, maybe sooner, with some tweaks to the Cold Parkway traffic patent and parking.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. We've had some, Brad's had some talks with the residents down there, we went down there, met with the police, talked about some changes. You know, part of the problem is the long-term parking, overnight parking is in basically the hole.
Yeah.
So residents park overnight, and we get a storm, they get flooded, so we're gonna look to make some tweaks on where the parking is, and some, some small changes to the, the traffic patent going around.
Somebody mentioned about some trucks that are being parked in Cold Parkway, that the business is no longer functioning, I was curious if that's something to follow up with.
So although, last time I was down there, I didn't notice those, I had noticed those a couple of times I was down there, but the last time I was down there, I didn't see those particular trucks, but I'll check again, uh, in the morning.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, that's, that's good. We'll be coming back on that.
Um, all right, let's move on to the next one, Advisory, one thirty-one.
Level funded, I believe?
On the most part. Looks like there's some...
Yeah, contractual increase for the staff, that's it.
So, um, what we're looking at for a budget of FY nineteen was 6,184. They requested 6,704, and that's what you've recommended, 6,704.
Great.
Any questions on that one? If not?
Nope.
We'll move on to the reserve fund, one thirty-two. That's level funded.
Yep.
Seventy-five thousand dollars, what we put into it in FY nineteen, we're putting seventy-five thousand into the reserve fund this year, and that's what's been recommended. Any questions on that one? No. All right. General liability insurance, topic that's near and dear to my heart, one ninety-two.
I believe that's up, right now, projecting that up about seven percent, if my math is right. That's the value of the new buildings, it's, we've had a lot of claims with the storms and things like that, and just the cost of the insurance going up.
Jim, I was gonna ask earlier, publicly, is what it makes sense to, such as, increase your, what's that called?
Deductible.
Thank you.
Uh, we look at that every year, Sean, I think we did bump it up a little bit on some stuff, but our deductible, I think, is five thousand right now. It's five thousand.
Would you say much of you bumped it up to ten?
Not as much as you think you would.
All right, okay.
Yeah, not as much as you would.
Well, you looked at it, thank you.
We, we, every year, we say, "Give us multiples of deductibles and where they're going." But to bump it up to ten, that can just be tough for the department to swallow.
Yep.
Depending where it's coming out, it's a lot of money for some departments, so...
All right. Just to let people understand what we're paying for FY nineteen, it was 694,441. We are actually looking to pay 743,052 just for insurance. That's a part of the budget, and that's that. Any questions? All right, let's go over to four twenty-four, which is streetlights.
Streetlights is down slightly from current fiscal year, not a lot. We're still chasing those credits, I believe, Nancy. Still chasing the credits on changes to the energy-efficient lights, so we're still chasing those. Not a completely seamless process, I'd say, owning the lights. We have a lot of lights out right now, chasing a contractor to go out and fix them, so that's something that Kevin and I and Al are gonna have to look at, how we can do that better than we've been doing it.
Okay.
There are contracts we can enter with companies. We're looking at, they can be expensive, there's a flat rate a month, if one contract, another is a per-hour contract, they come out and do it, so we're looking at those to, see if we can find a way to be more responsive to those, because right now, it's taking a while to go out and fix some of those lights, because we don't have someone on standby to just go out and fix them.
Yeah, I had someone call from the Egypt area, it's really dark down there.
Yeah.
There's an existing light that doesn't work?
There's a bunch of existing lights that are out.
And, you know, one of the questions we're asking, the ESCO contractors, "These are fairly new lights, why are they all burning out?"
Right.
And we're waiting to hear back on that, whether he's gonna be responsible for some of those.
Yeah, we just replaced them, all right.
Yeah.
We have a bucket truck. I'll go up. Give me a couple of bulbs.
Yeah, you have time.
There are some residents...
All right, can we go back to casualty and property insurance, because we might want to put that up a little bit if I send it up.
All those special town employees, isn't it?
Show up on the truck.
Bucket truck.
Yeah, no, I know that there are some residents that have...
Yeah, there are definitely some issues on, uh, on getting out to fix those lights, so it's something we talked to Al about, and we're gonna continue to work on that, try to find a better way to get that done.
Yeah, any kind of like software program out there that could, I'm sorry, John, I know you don't, you want to, but, any type of a software program out there that...
That tells you when the light's out?
Or just like last time, if we have an average sort of length of life of a light...
Maintenance schedule.
You know, yeah, like you put it, you, I don't know, you replace it in March.
Not that I'm aware of.
So it has a twelve-month, you know, a twelve-month life. Go back out in the next March and check it.
You'd have to have a, something in the sensor, something in the light to tell you? I mean, there's, there's probably programs in terms of, like a maintenance program?
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Um, but, not that it tells you...
I just, I think, I think, yeah, I agree with you, I think we need to be a little bit more proactive and automated in our DPW overall.
Yeah, I don't, uh, you know, the, the one community that, where we looked at taking over the lights, I'm like, "I don't want to be responsible for fixing streetlights." Whatever the extra money it's costing me to pay for the lights, I don't want to be responsible for chasing down the streetlights, and, and that's an issue that's coming up now.
That's where we are.
Chasing down the streetlights, so, Kevin and I and Al talked about it, probably less than two weeks ago, and Al's looking at some options that maybe we can do that'll be more responsive.
Okay. Thank you.
Put that on a goal for this year.
Sheepers between you and Karen, you guys are like Tony, all-in-one. Tony's not here, and we're able to, like, get through this, you guys are asking questions. I'm trying to, like, Sean, you're doing a good job.
We're doing our diligence.
Thanks.
And our responsibility.
All right, just so that the numbers are out there, streetlights, the FY budget for FY19 that we're currently in was $120,000. The department requested $410,000, and that's what we're looking to fund for this coming FY budget of 2020, cheapest 2020. I believe it. All right, any other questions? If not, let's get to 912.
Level funded, we are still working on building up our reserve in the trust fund. Our goal is $750,000 to get up to that.
We're at right now?
210.
607 right now.
Okay, we're close then.
Yeah, we still have six months.
Six months of the year to go through, yeah. That's based on what's in this year's, plus the balance, this year's budget plus the balance, so, so far, it's okay.
I remember when it was low and we were trying to build it up, that's nice.
Yeah, we're getting there.
All right, so the budget for FY19 was for $210,000. We're doing the same again, level funded, $210,000 for workers' comp to build up the reserves in this. Great. Questions from the board? Finally, let's finish with 913, which is the unemployment.
Unemployment is level funded. We're not looking at, the town side, we're not looking at potential layoffs at this point.
Good. I don't think we've had any.
About 22 years we haven't had since you've been on.
Since, I remember Joe Norton used to say, there hasn't been any layoffs since he was on, which was, was back to over 40 years, that's on the town side, so we're very fortunate. Just so people understand, the budget's for $65,000. That was in FY19, that's what the request is this year, and that's what we're doing for FY20, $65,000. All right, so that completes our budget items for this meeting. I am gonna actually ask that we take a break. I know some people have come here, it's 10 of 9, we've been doing this since 6, so I'd like to give a break to Lorraine. What we can do is come back and we'll start the next, which is a discussion vote amendment to architect contract for the Council on Aging project.
Actually, we're not discussing that.
We'll do new business.
The paperwork hasn't come in yet on that, and that centers around the amount of work that's being done on the gym, looking at the gym is beyond what we talked about with the original contract.
So we'll start with new business, which is the vote, close the 2019 annual special town meeting warrant, and move on to the annual license renewals, and then to our board and appointments. Good? Let's take a quick break. All right, we're back, folks. And first thing we have is a discussion, this is new business under new business, discussion vote, close the 2019 annual special town meeting warrant, and that means we're gonna close it. And if we're gonna close it, I need a motion to do so.
Move that the Board of Selectmen close the warrant for April 18, 2019 annual and special town meeting.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. Quick question.
Did you say the 18? Did you say 18?
I thought she did, too.
I thought you did, and I have a hearing right now, so.
Um, oh, yeah, 'cause I read it wrong, so. Move that the Board of Selectmen close the warrant for April 8, 2019 annual town and special meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that takes care of that.
To get a list, there's about 37 articles between the two, the special and the annual. The first 13 on the annual are, you know, your basic ones you have all the time. There's a couple to establish capital stabilization funds for some of our enterprise funds. We have three additional property tax exemptions that we're gonna...
Oh, good.
Propose to follow what we did before. One that we'll talk with the board about is possibly adopting the real occupancy tax. Not a lot of money, but, you know, you go towards OPEB, go to capital, go to the regular budget. We have placeholders for the Ellis property, obviously, we have a placeholder for street acceptance for Blanchard Farms, a bylaw for agriculture, placeholder for the regional sewer project, if we have something, I think that's...
Oh, good.
Probably premature, but I wanted to have a placeholder on there. One, two, three, four, five zoning articles from the planning board.
Really?
Yep.
That's a lot. Are they complicated?
No, most of them are, I believe are gonna be tweaks of existing bylaws. We also have a petition article for an amendment to the zoning map at Hemmerock, a petition article to terminate the Go Green lease, and a late petition article that came in that would put a building moratorium on large projects because of our water situation.
So those are citizen articles?
Citizen petitions, yep.
And when will they become before us, not for?
Uh, probably January, February, yeah. Gonna schedule those, but that's what's in the dole today before you close the warrant.
What's the criteria for someone to submit a...
10 signatures.
Right.
Just 10?
Yes. For the annual town meeting, 100 for a special.
Oh, okay.
All right, well...
Whose law is that? State, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's move on to the discussion vote, 2019 town, a situat, annual license renewals, I'm trying to find it here. Does anybody have that in front of them?
Yeah.
I do. So basically, do you want me to...
There you go.
Get it?
So, this is it, right?
It's page 137.
136 or 37?
Well, it starts on 36.
Okay. So, hang on one second. So there's a list, though, what we're looking to do is a motion for...
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common victular licenses for 2019, for Creo, Harbor House Pizza, Mike's Subs, known as Homemade Incorporated, and Riva Pizza.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye. Elbstein.
It's a 3-0 vote, which, one abstention by Mr. Harris. And the next one is for Class II license.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class II licenses for 2019, Alfred C. Coyle, doing business as Seacrest Auto, and Larry Finney.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next one is for septic disposal licenses.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following septic disposal licenses for 2019, Rosano Davis Sanitary Pumping Incorporated.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one's for the innkeeper's license.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the innkeeper's license for 2019, for the inn at Situate Harbor.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
That's all the licenses for the year.
That's all for the year.
Great, great job. You must be happy.
All right.
Very happy.
It's a lot of work.
Wonderful job.
Perfect. So now, we're gonna move on to a discussion vote for board and committee appointments. I ask that if you want, get your sheets out, if that's easier. The first area that we wanna tackle is the recreational commission, we had three applicants. All three looked pretty good.
And we have, how many openings?
We have two openings?
Yep.
We have three great candidates.
I don't mind Connor would do an excellent job, and I think Mike would be worthy of being on that, and would do a fantastic job at the town.
Yeah, I second that.
I'll move to appoint Michael Connor to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mike, congrats. Now, we have two others. We had a woman, Maria Marcelino, and then there was Greg, oh my gosh, I butchered his name, I'm gonna do it again.
Yes, Jackie.
So Jackie.
I would like to say that I thought a lot of the comments that Maria made were unique and a new perspective, and, you know, we have great candidates, I don't think either one would be a bad choice, but I did, I was intrigued by her, her interest and her experience.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion. Move to appoint Maria Marcelino to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And we should send a letter, Lorraine, to Greg.
Yes, I would send it to him.
Thank you.
Do they have an alternate, they don't have an alternate on that commission, do they?
They have, but it's not in the bylaw.
Okay, all right, 'cause maybe that's something to consider.
We could ask, suggest it to him if he's interested, there is an alternate. Maybe, I think what's important is that there could be other openings, and if people are interested, I don't wanna dissuade them from going or participating, because they're not a voting member, but telling you anything, once you're going, you're going, and...
Still get to voice your opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, renewals are up in April, and I'll be telling you when it's out.
Correct.
And, you know, it's not, it's within the next six months, they need to be...
Yeah, I think that's great. All right. So the next area that we wanna talk about is the Shellfish Advisory Committee, and there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven people for a committee of...
Was it three?
Three, I thought, wasn't it?
We're only appointing three.
So, thoughts from the board?
Well, John, you mentioned it, it's too bad we didn't talk about it a little earlier in the discussions, 'cause I think John, Jamie, David, guys who are interested, have the knowledge, maybe wouldn't wanna be on the committee, you know, do you think they could be on this committee, and then when it comes, comes time to leasing out plots, what would they do? Recuse themselves, would they resign, or would they, you know, it's, it's a lot like on the waterways with people that did the mortgage. So, you know, I'm glad you mentioned it, and I think you, you know, John sitting over there, when he came up, I think he had heard it, and let, you know, thought about it, said, you know what, you know, I'm okay if I'm, if I'm not on.
Yeah.
The last thing we wanna do is discourage those, those few guys, in this case, to get their input.
Right.
You know, that's for sure, 'cause we wouldn't be having this discussion if it wasn't for them.
Right, because they're the ones who are, who have the, the knowledge from the experience and the work to understand...
Right.
The needs.
We want it done right.
And I think, you know, my, my concern was, at this point in time, there is no conflict per se, but if they're gonna start leasing, and it starts dealing with generating revenue and how, and they're kinda stuck because they're, they're the ones who are involved in it, and it's, it may not be a direct conflict, but it's an indirect conflict, and that's the only thing that I get worried about. Not because of these individuals, they're very, very upfront, honest, they have integrity. It's, what's the future road down, what lies in the future if you end up with somebody who isn't? And that's the only downside, but all of them are very knowledgeable, there's no doubt about it, as well as the other people that we had.
Jamie Davenport did go into the Attorney General's Office, went to interns there, and did do a write-up through a patent.
Oh, he did?
That would not be a conflict, yes.
I didn't see that.
They're not the people who issued the licenses.
Who issued the license.
If they get...
That's what I was gonna say, or maybe...
If they get a license, and they're still on the committee, there may be a conflict at that point, where they would be overseeing themselves or making rules about themselves, but being on the committee that's setting it up does not necessarily constitute a conflict, because they're not the ones that'll be issuing the licenses, you are. But if they got a license, then would have to step back and say, okay.
And Jamie did...
Step off of it. Yeah, and Jamie did say that in his interview, that they totally get it.
And that's just what I said, in other words, right now, we're setting it up, there's no conflict. Once they get the license, that becomes a problem, and that's where you're gonna get into either direct or indirect issue, but...
I think their passion and, and knowledge is, is something that we would be remiss if we didn't, at least one of these guys, and, you know, I would, I would say Jamie's the one that's been doing a lot of the legwork and brought it to us in the first place. I would, I think that would outweigh any potential, and I believe him, I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I'd agree with that, and I think, but, and I also think, just with regards to John, he offered to sit on the side as well, John Tedeschi.
Okay, so you don't think would, all right.
No, he's... So I think it would be nice to give somebody else an opportunity, I know my hair, right? I told you.
Turn this stupid thing down.
Make sure you get that on TV. There you go.
The...
It's been a long...
Have that control.
Sorry, Jamie.
Every time she says something, I'm gonna turn it off, shh, there you go.
You have wardrobe... John offered to step aside and be an active member in the, in the audience, which I thought was nice, and I'd like to respect that, too, so we can give some other folks an opportunity, 'cause I thought there were some folks, I was very impressed with Susan Harrison as well, with her experience in the Chesapeake Bay, so I thought it'd be nice to have somebody who's actually worked.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm getting it up to you now.
It's fine.
I had noted her as well, because a big part of this initial effort will be to write the policies.
Policies, yeah.
And that's what she does all day long. So I think that that was, would be a real big benefit to this group as well.
I agree.
I got a text message from David Dauphine, and he said, no matter what we do, he's, he'd be okay with...
Oh, good.
Either being on or off. He will participate and try to help move this forward, so...
So I'll make a motion for Susan. Move to appoint Susan Harrison to the self, to the Shellfish Advisory Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's one.
Now, what are we doing, three or four?
We're doing...
Three, right?
Yeah, three.
Okay.
Move to appoint Jamie Davenport to the Shellfish Advisory Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
That's two.
All right.
Scott Harrington, anybody?
Um, yeah.
Jeff Palmer?
So Scott is going to school for agriculture right now, right?
Right.
Just to kinda come back to some of...
Who seconded on Jamie Davenport?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Policy show. Yeah, why did I write, why did I write TV next to this?
Well, hello. Next to who?
Scott Harrington, I have to look at his resume again. Is that what he works at?
What was, what was your question?
I, I don't understand what note I wrote.
Okay.
I'll look at the resume again.
He's in the midst of getting his degree, I thought, in this area.
Yeah, I thought he was a strong candidate.
And Jeff Palmer, on the other hand, I know he's dedicated based on what he's done, based on his history.
Yeah.
Okay. Thoughts from anybody?
Yeah, Jeff Palmer, I, you know, I know he's very dedicated, he's a Situate resident, and I think he'd do a good job.
He's been here for a long time, so it might be nice to have...
And then, all right.
Legacy.
Move to appoint Jeff Palmer to the Shellfish Advisory Committee for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Canfield, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, four open, congratulations.
And I don't...
All right, so that's it, right, three, we got three.
That's it. All right, so now, one second, just before we move on, the Waterways appointed Craig Rosenquist as their person to this committee.
Oh, okay.
So that's four.
You have a liaison, yeah.
Yes, yes. And the only other person who's voting is the Shellfish Warden, right? I think that's who it is.
Or will it be Steve Havamasta?
It is, one from the Waterways, one holder of the town recreational shelter for three years, two members at large, Shellfish, voting member.
Constable, the Shellfish Constable, yep.
All right, good. All right, so let's now move over to the widow's walk. So here's my, my difficulty with it. We have a committee set up of seven people, two of which, one happens to be the golf pro, which is Bob, one from the EDC, which leaves us to five. I actually kinda feel that maybe, you know, I'm happy to move and make it nine people, a nine-person member, a nine-person board, if you folks feel that way. If not, that's fine. And that way, then you'd have nine people on it. There are a lot of applicants for this, and I...
It's a lot of people.
It's a lot of people. I think there's a lot of people, a lot to say, but I leave that up to the board with your thoughts. Generally, I'm against increasing a board or committee more than seven. But in this case, you do have two delegates from, or two liaisons who are gonna be voting members, one being the...
Yeah, 'cause the only thing that always concerns me when you have nine is getting to a quorum.
Well, I think five.
It's a lot of people.
Five, right.
Five folks.
Can't imagine that you couldn't get five people for the golf committee.
I hope not, I mean, I hope it's not a problem. I'm just, just working on a nine-member board for six years, it's, sometimes it's hard. When I was on advisory, it was a nine-member board.
I just think that it's such a large asset...
Yes.
That people are so passionate about this. We saw more than 20 people come in, they will show up.
I know, okay.
The project, and what we're, we're tasked with is very complicated and large, so a work, a bigger working committee might not be a bad thing, 'cause it's a, it's not a think tank, this is a very actionable committee.
Yep.
So, yeah, I would, I would support increasing the size.
And this is for... And this is for...
But when you said nine, you mean one from EDC, and then Bob Sanderson being counted?
And then seven.
Okay. And then, Jim, you're not, Jim, are you the moderator for it, or how, what was your...
I'll get it set up and going, and that's...
You what? I'm sorry?
We'll get the initial meeting going, we'll go and get them organized.
Okay.
And then...
And then you'll give them their space?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll basically tell them, this is how much money you have to spend.
Okay. Okay, all right. But do we need to appoint Bob and an EDC rep, or is that just stated?
Bob is going to be a...
Ex officio.
Yeah.
Okay.
And EDC has already appointed him a liaison.
Oh, okay.
So...
Okay.
That's going to be Gina Savage.
Okay, great.
Okay.
All right, so we have seven.
Do we...
Well, I think we have to take a motion to move.
I move that we increase the Widows Walk Committee member total to nine, with seven appointees from the Board of Selectmen.
Second. Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so now we got seven, seven, seven picks.
So I know one that I feel very strongly about, which was the first gentleman that came forth, Mark Bissell. I thought he had terrific strategic skills, and I think this, this group may tend to get emotional along the way, and hoping that, I don't know him, but he appeared to me to have very strong strategic management and planning skills, so I think he'd be a great asset.
I agree. He was one that I had selected.
Okay.
All motion? Oh, I'm sorry?
Sorry, I kind of looked at it, like, we have all these people with a whole bunch of different skills.
Yeah.
And I sort of looked, I split out the people that, into sort of categories of what skills they brought, and he was number one on the finance list of those sets of skills, so...
All right, so I'll move to appoint Mark Bissell to the Widows Walk Golf Committee for a term of one year until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
That's number one.
I...
Go ahead.
I'd like to appoint, like I said, everybody, and having only be able to pick a certain number, I certainly hope the others that aren't selected do go and participate, all right, get engaged. Having said that, one that, you know, that many stood out, but James Forsgod, James Forsgad stood out to me. Someone who knows the course very well, grew up in town.
Who?
James Forsgad.
On page two.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
All right. So I'll nominate him. Move to appoint James Forsgad to the Widows Walk Golf Committee for a term of one year until a successor is named and the completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Can. Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's two.
I think, given the long history and extreme knowledge of the course and the process and what can really improve there, that Monty Newman is, certainly should be invited to serve on this board.
I agree.
Monty had mentioned it to me years ago, and...
Yeah, he's been fighting for this committee for a while, so I...
And I'm told he's, works very hard at doing what he had done on the unofficial committee.
I agree.
All right.
All right.
Motion?
I will move to appoint Monty Newman to the Widows Walk Golf Committee for a term of one year or until a successor is named and completion of Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program within thirty days.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's three.
So I think it's important also to have a female golf representative on the committee, and Susan is the only golfer that really came forward, active golfer, I should say, right? I just think it'd be...
Well, and I thought her perspective... Yeah, she knows about interior design, and she, obviously, about curb appeal and things like that, so as I said, to have a diversity of view would be really useful to end up with a product that we're going to be happy with.
She had some nice cost-effective ideas to leverage different community groups, too. You guys all right with that?
Motion?
Move to appoint Susan DeCoste to the Widows Walk Golf Committee for a term of one year until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
That's four.
That's four, right?
Another candidate that stood out to me was Mark Joyce. I don't know how you guys felt about him.
Yeah, I liked his indoor golf idea. That's what I've written down.
Yeah, that's what I wrote down, too.
When you interview twenty-five candidates in a night, you've got to write down some key things there that, that resonate. Yeah, I mean, I'm...
Move to appoint Mark Joyce to the Widows Walk Golf Committee for a term of one year until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Unanimous?
So Karen, when you were talking about different skill sets, I also was struck by the marketing acumen of Kevin Callahan and his experience, especially with advertising, media planning. And I think that's a big, you know, it's a big miss that we have with our golf courses, not really, I think, I think it's an important component of driving revenue, right, is really understanding how to reach the audience, so I thought he would be another good asset.
He looked good. The other one I liked was William Riding, Writings. He was the one who plays a fair amount at the Widows Walk, but he's also part of the grounds at Northeastern University, and I was impressed by him with maybe his input, but...
He stood out to me also because of the same thing.
Yes.
It's the operations experience and the building maintenance.
I have a note in the wrong place.
I thought that that was another area of expertise that could be useful in getting the buildings.
That was Bill, William?
Bill Ri, William Riding.
I agree, I had that written down as well.
And I'm not just trying to skip over the one that you just referenced.
Oh, we're only up to four.
Kevin Callahan.
We're up to five.
Five.
Six and seven, so there are two more.
Okay.
So Kevin Callahan was one.
Two more spots.
I mean, they're, they're all...
They're all good.
Right.
Yeah, they're all great.
The ones, don't forget the two from today, too.
Yeah. I mean...
He showed up twice.
Yep.
Yeah, I had that noted as well.
Eric Raymond's experience is, now, do we, that was one of the areas of, I was thinking, I mean, you really need somebody like with a golf, there were a couple of people with golf experience, like in actual course, obviously Raymond, Eric Raymond's name.
He only had a four handicap, you have to have a three.
Yikes.
I think you said he had, was it five hormones?
Yes. No, just kidding.
Well, Mr. Rosenow came twice, too.
And Mr. Rosenow came twice, too, yep. Anyway, I just throw that just before, because we got two more slots.
Yeah.
Mr. McDonough I liked a lot. I've known him, he's been down there.
But he's away four months.
Right.
That was the only challenge I had.
Yeah, I know, and, all right.
I think, given all the candidates...
Hopefully, he'd still be involved.
Yeah, when he comes back, hopefully, he'll touch base with everyone.
Right, and I thought Monty has the same sort of experience that he's had, too.
Right, exactly. So did, did we nominate William Writings?
No.
No, we're still in discussion.
Like I said, they're all good, I think. I didn't see any that were not qualified.
Is that a motion?
It is. Move to appoint William Writings to the Widows Walk Golf Course for a term of one year until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's six.
All right, here comes the tough part.
I know. I do think your comments about Kevin, and he's also, known him for a very long time, and he is a very even keel person.
Did you just say Kevin?
Yes, we actually have a Kevin.
You won't forget that name, will you, John? I just, just, I was waiting for that.
You should put him on just for that.
I must have been thinking about him all night.
Is that a motion?
Unless somebody...
Nope.
Okay. Move to appoint Kevin Callahan to Widows Walk Golf Committee for a term of one year until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
That's seven.
That completes it.
I'm glad we increased it, because I don't think we could have picked five. It would have been too hard.
Yeah, I think it's best overall, and I feel bad because a lot of good quality, good applicants, and I just hate to deter them from not getting on and feeling like they don't want to get involved in the town they need to.
Yeah, it's...
Or something else.
From what I could tell, too, it looks like a nice rounded personality, so hopefully they'll, they'll work well together. It's a big group, so they can move forward.
And it's just like Shellfish, that, you know, I'm sure a lot of these people will be involved, whether they're voting members or not.
Yeah.
And they are encouraged to do so.
You guys are waiting to find out what the results are, I bet, right?
We pulled a poll, we're the poll.
Five minutes too late.
That's my fault. I play basketball, and I...
You didn't run down the court fast enough.
Exactly.
We voted him on, voted the members. Jamie, you were nominated, you had been nominated as one of the board members, and then we voted...
Susan.
Susan Harrison.
Mm-hmm.
And also Jeff Palmer. But we expect, John, that you will be there in attendance. We appreciated your comment at the end, saying whether I'm on or not, and we expect...
And that's what, you did say that, we didn't...
We appreciated that only because we knew you'd probably be there.
Be there anyway.
But it would also give us a little bit more.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Get down.
All right, moving on. Other business, liaison reports. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Have a great holiday.
Liaison reports, anybody?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Capitals are real busy with their review for fiscal twenty. They've started in earnest reviewing the budgets.
Good.
Good.
Are you going to those?
Well, I can.
Okay.
But I talked to Chris before or after each of them, so...
Is there CPC this Monday coming up? Oh, no, it's, it's...
No, it's Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
I'll be up in the choir to go.
Turn the lights on, all right, get, get set up. All right.
All right, never mind.
We'll be on correspondence.
I don't see any in the packet. Is there no correspond? Why is it not?
Page one forty-five.
Oh, rats, I scrolled too far. Hold on. Oh, that's right, that's right, sorry. Apologies, okay. Correspondence? I gotta rush this, sir. We received a, let's see.
What happened to your computer?
What happened to what?
Your computer.
My computer?
Yeah.
The guy came in and fixed it.
Oh.
We received a copy of a letter that was written to the Situate Community from the Superintendent of Schools, Ron Griffin, that announces that they anticipate the viability study and subsequent report will be ready at the end of September. With this in mind, they will be holding an informational workshop for the public at the Gates Dining Commons on January seventh at seven P.M. And that will provide an overview of the study report and options, a review of the grade reconfiguration, research and recommendations, and an opportunity to share from the community, and it will be facilitated by a professional facilitator. So January seventh, seven P.M. Received a letter from Mass Cultural Council in mid-November to Mr. Bedrow, pleased to inform the Situate Harbor Cultural District has been approved for a fiscal nineteen grant of five thousand dollars.
That's great.
For their initiative through the Cultural Council. So that's exciting. I think Jim actually told us about that. Is the emergency repairs part of the correspondence?
No. It's just emergency repairs to water treatment plant.
Okay.
Tony had asked for that at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
So that's just summary.
Contracts.
Summary of the contract. End of November, we received a letter from FEMA. On behalf of Federal Emergency Management Association, region-run floodplain management and insurance branch, I would like to congratulate the Town of Situate for increasing its level of participation in the National Flood Insurance Programming Program. So thank you, FEMA. And you got a nice plaque for that?
Where are we putting it? Put it up in here somewhere. You're good.
Find a place for it.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, beginning, or mid-December, sent a letter to the Selectmen in accordance with mass general law that has determined that a portion of Cohasset Harbor no longer meets the established criteria for approved classification and has been closed for shellfishing.
That is not where we would be doing shellfishing.